Okay, thank you everybody. I'd like to call our annual organization meeting to order at 7:34 PM. Could I have the roll please?
Mr. Chairman Torpe.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis Cord.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Robinson.
Here.
Trustee Schnell.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner is absent. Susan Caljean present. Also Mr. Rother.
He's here.
Thank you. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the President of Courts with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the Village website.
Is your mic on?
You need to sneak into your mic. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Caljean, Village Clerk.
Thank you. We have one resolution for executive session.
Resolution 2014-112. Resolution authorizing an executive session at the May 19th, 2014 Organization Meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, we have two items for discussion. One is Department of Public Works, which is a personnel matter. The other is Affordable Housing Trust Funds, which is an attorney-client privilege.
A move?
A move by Trustee Levinson.
Say it again.
Seconded by Trustee Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, we'll be back at eight.
I'm getting feedback.
I thought you liked getting feedback.
Listen.
All right.
Yeah, I got it. Get it?
Jimmy Andrews, you're not.
Did you get it?
Thank everyone for being here. I'd like to call this reorgan- annual organization meeting back to order at 8:04 PM. Could we have the roll call, please?
Village President Torpe.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Column.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson. Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner's absent, and Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present.
Please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, a few announcements to get started. The 11th Annual Artist Studio Tour has been kicked off for Art, Business, and Connection, ABC. These preview exhibitions are around town, and we would remind everybody to check out the businesses that are hosting them. The shows are going to run through the 27th. And this is in collaboration between The Baird, the Village Center Alliance, and the Tour Committee. They invite you out to any of these four locations. Bunny's, Kitchen Alley Mode, Kamaya Kama, and the UPS Store. And you can find out more about that at studiotour soma.org. The Piero Gallery presents the Moncler Art Museum's Young Curators Exhibition. The shows will run through May 22nd, and the gallery talk is May 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And I'm pretty sure you can find more about that on the Piero Gallery's website, which you can find by getting to thebaired.org. We still do have a couple spots open for volunteers. We have a couple committees that are doing some really incredible things, and a whole lot of volunteers that did some really great things over the weekend on Irvington Ave. And if there is anybody else who's interested in coming out, whether it's helping out on a weekend, for one night, or for serving on a committee, please let us know. And you can visit the website of southorange.org and find out a little bit more about what's available by going to the volunteering section. We've talked about the South Orange Village Center Alliance's Downtown Survey. They are interested in what you're interested in to see in our downtown business district. So please go to sovillagesurvey.com. Excuse me, the survey takes about 10 minutes, and it will only be up until Memorial Day. So if you haven't done it, please do that and let us know, excuse me, what you'd like to see downtown. There's an effort underway to reestablish First Night after a two-year hiatus. For anyone who might be unfamiliar with First Night, it's a great opportunity for family, friends, neighbors, community members to get together and celebrate the coming of the new year between both South Orange and Maplewood. And so we are looking for people who have any interest or any skills or experience in organizing events or doing marketing or outreach to get involved and help us put this great event back together. And if you want a little bit more information about it, or if you do want to volunteer, you can visit somafirstnightweebly.com. Another reminder about the Two Towns Triathlon for Kids. We're hosting the Two Towns Triathlon on Saturday, June 14th at 8:00 AM. This is sponsored by our Recreation Department and the Maplewood Recreation Department, the South Mountain YMCA, and Atlantic Health. Children ages seven through 14 will swim laps of the pool, bike through Meadowland Park in the West Montrose neighborhood, and run around the duck pond, ending the race at the footbridge next to the pool. If you have any questions about that, you can contact our Recreation Department. Another reminder about Solarize Soma. Even seen some more lawn signs pop up around town. Solarize Soma is a grassroots all-volunteer organization whose mission is to double the number of solar installations in Maplewood and South Orange in 2014. If you want to, if you want to learn a little bit more, learn if it's something that works for your home, they're offering free solar assessments. And you can sign up for one by May 31st at solarizasoma.org. We ask folks to join us on Monday, May 26th, at 10:30 AM at Memorial Rock near the Duck Pond for our annual Memorial Day service. And just a reminder that our offices, the village offices, will be closed on that day. And just to note that the May 28th meeting of the Board of Trustees has been canceled. We had three meetings this month because of the timing with this reorganization meeting, which we're required to have on this Monday each year. And so the next meeting will be June 9th at, here, at SOPAK at 7:30. We have one presentation this evening, although I don't see our presenter.
As noted in the jot form, Ms. Rule can't get here until 8:30.
Oh, okay.
Can we move on to something until she arrives?
Yep, we sure can. So at this time, I would like to open the meeting up for public comment. So if there's anybody who wishes to speak, please come forward. You guys have a timer set up over there? Hey, just state your name and address.
Janine Bauer, 416 Clark Street, and I would ask one of my former trustee colleagues at least if this discussion goes over three minutes and if the trustees think it's warranted.
Sorry, I can't hear anything.
I would just ask if the discussion goes over three minutes, if one of the trustees would consider extending it for another three minutes, because I think it's warranted.
We're not allowed to do that, but try and get as much as you can in and try and consider anything else.
I just hope to...
Right, or you could, sorry, sorry to interrupt, or you could also speak again at the end.
I just hope to clear up what perhaps is a misunderstanding. I have requested that the village apply for a Transportation Alternatives grant to DOT for the continuation and, you know, perhaps completion, depending on how much money we get, of the Rawway River Greenway Bike and Pedestrian Path. This would be the first year that funds were eligible for this and specifically targeted to this, that we would not apply. And generally, there's only about 25 to 35 grants for projects like this given out statewide, and we have never been turned down. And if we do not apply, clearly our spot will be taken by somebody else. When I spoke to various trustees about that, trustee Clark indicated to me that Adam was thinking of applying for bus shelters at the train station. I called Elise Bremer-Nye, who, the Bike Pedestrian Coordinator, has recently retired at DOT. I called the next most knowledgeable person who's been there for years. She indicated that would not be an eligible activity. Maybe what Adam was thinking about was the transit village money, but that's not the same thing as the Transportation Alternatives Grant money, for which there's a lot of money this year, because activists prevailed upon Congress and Congress funded it at a greater amount. So I brought with me the eligibility criteria. It's the same as the program used to be called Transportation Enhancements. If you go on the DOT website, it's exactly the same criteria, both for eligibility and selection. And the very first item is provision of facilities for pedestrian, pedestrians and bicycles, and it goes on. The River Greenway Project hits every one of the eligibility criteria, I think, except Transportation Museum or something like that. So I would strongly urge you to get the grant going. I'm very happy to help do that in terms of the narrative or the budgeting or anything else. And I would very much appreciate that, so I'm going to leave, excuse me, leave these with the clerk.
Thank you.
Twenty seconds.
Yeah, if there's any more information that you do have about any of that, please feel free to forward it to us. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Bob Adler, 120 Rolston. Good evening. President Torpe just mentioned two of the things offhand, and that is the signs that are popping up on lawns. And we finally got rid of most of the Keep Kids Alive, Drive 25 signs. Now we have Drive Like Your Kids Live Here, No Damn, Rent Party, Got Solar, Soma Solarize, Drivers Must Stop For Pedestrians, Tell Us What You Want, Conversation On Race, Northeast Prize Festival, and Cougar Baseball. That's what I just saw in the last couple of days driving around. So my question is, can I put that, any sign I want, on my lawn? Can I put it on the shade tree strip in front of my house? And can I put it on public property, the way I see all these signs around? So that's my question, and it's a comment. I think it's a blight on the town to see all these plastic signs everywhere.
Thank you.
If I can get an answer to the question, sure.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Seeing as nobody else wishes to speak, I'd like to close public comments. As far as the lawn signs go, I know we had had some discussions in the past. I don't know if those were only about political lawn signs or if those applications and fees in that ordinance was applicable to all lawn signs.
Yeah, the, we're aware and certainly have noticed ourselves the recent proliferation of signs of all sorts. I've been in discussion with the Construction Official Code Enforcement Officer. They, you know, are, one of the things we're trying to evaluate is, the ordinance is not 100% clear in terms of public entity. For example, the pedestrian campaign was a village-sponsored event, and those are done on private, on public, on property as opposed to on private property. But there are also a number of them that the gentleman referenced that are popping up from other organizations that are putting them in, on public property, on private property. So we are, there are certain regulations on the books that we will be enforcing, but we will probably also have a recommendation to perhaps amend those to address some of the, I guess, maybe unforeseen conditions that are not currently addressed.
And maybe when we do that, we can make sure to take a holistic approach and address some of the issues that came up about political lawn signs that we never actually did anything about three years ago.
But not all signs are created equal.
Right.
You know, there are, there are some signs with current political messages on them, which if they're posted to express a political point of view, aside from big P politics, during a period of time when the issue is alive and well, it would be probably unconstitutional to deprive people of expressing themselves in that fashion. But that doesn't mean that you can put that kind of a sign up and leave it up forever.
You also can't put those signs on public property.
Not on public property, definitely not. We're talking about on your own front lawn.
Well, we're talking about everything.
No, but his point, as we made.
His point was about private property, right. But I mean, but there's obviously some unclear pieces to this about all of these different components. So we should just make sure to address all of it at once for once, so that it doesn't come up again. So that even though I don't think there are any political lawn signs that would be included in, as far as political speech goes, that are included in what has been popping up around town lately, let's make sure not to forget that when we do address the rest of the questions.
Can I suggest that we bring this to the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday night, if that's okay with trustee Rosner?
That's fine.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. President, also on the first, former trustee Bauer, just an update. I have spoken to Mr. Lerner. He, I think there was, she's correct, there was some confusion between the Transportation Alternatives and the other, the Transit Program. We're aware of the Transportation Alternatives. The deadline's been extended, I think, to June 30th. So certainly we will solicit all the information and whatever we can from the River Greenway team and explore that for additional funding.
We are going to explore it.
Absolutely.
There's an opportunity there, and I would suggest to take advantage of Ms. Bauer's offer to help with the language.
Certainly.
She's a subject matter expert in that area.
Great. All right, let's move on to, so just, so folks are aware, is our organization meeting is kind of statutorily required by our charter. And so the bulk of this meeting is kind of housekeeping, making appointments. So we're going to run through them, make sure to read all the names out. If anybody's interested, who's getting appointed to what. I don't think there's anything particularly surprising or controversial that's contained in here, and then we'll move on to do our municipal budget and any other discussion later in the meeting. So to start, we have our, the consent agenda, which is appointments to our standing committees.
Okay, Resolution 2014-113. This is for the Board of Trustees Standing Committees, and I'd like to make a note for the record. Resolution, this resolution shall have Walter Clark removed and Stephen Schnall added for planning and zoning. Okay?
Okay, and just so everybody's aware, I'm just going to read the different committee memberships out.
You look confused.
Was that a change that was mistaken from last time?
Right.
Okay.
Things changed from last year.
Steve, I contacted the clerk today because as per the previous set of assignments, it was just to pick up, I don't know, copy and paste or something, but you were planning and zoning, I wasn't.
Okay.
So, so let me know if, I mean, this should be, the list I'm about to read out right now. Finance and IT Committee, trustee Levinson is the chair, and trustee Rosner, trustee Schnall. Legal and Personnel Committee, trustee Davis Ford is the chair. Trustee Column and trustee Levinson are members. Planning and Zoning Committee, trustee Rosner is the chair. Trustee Schnall and trustee Column are members. Public Safety Committee, trustee Column is chair. Trustee Clark and trustee Rosner are members. Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, trustee Clark is chair. Trustees Levinson and Davis Ford are members. And Rec and Cultural Affairs Committee, trustee Schnall is chair and trustees Davis Ford and Clark are members. Sound right to everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
I move.
Moved by trustee Column. Seconded by trustee Rosner. I think we can do a voice vote for these. Is there any reason we need to take a roll call for these?
I could. Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson? Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, appointments to outside agencies, organizations. Resolution 114, resolution appointing three members and an alternate, alternate member to the South Orange Maplewood Board of Education Liaison Committee. And those members are Village President Torpe, trustee Clark, trustee Schnall, trustee Levinson. Resolution 115, resolution appointing a village representative to the joint meeting, trustee Levinson. 116, resolution appointing a trustee liaison and an alternate trustee liaison to the Community Coalition on Race, trustee Davis Ford and trustee Clark. 117, resolution appointing a trustee liaison to the South Orange Performing Arts Center, trustee Schnall. Resolution 118, appointing a trustee liaison to Youthnet, trustee Schnall. Statutory boards and commissions.
These, these are not consent agenda, right? We have to vote on each of these resolutions separately? Is that correct?
The ones I just mentioned?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or can we just move, like, Resolutions 114 through 118? Can we do them in categories so we can just do them in bulk?
Yeah, so why don't we do that for each of these groups?
Each of these groups, certainly.
I have one comment on 114.
Okay.
Is it the Board of Education Liaison, Liaison Committee or is it the Board of School Estuary? The Liaison Committee no longer exists.
It's the Board of School Estuary, yeah.
Well, they've, they've been one and the same, as far as the membership is concerned, but...
Yeah, but it's the Board of School.
Right.
What is that?
It says the Board of School.
It's the Board of School.
School Estuary, okay, we'll change that.
Change it for the record?
Yeah.
Okay.
Although, also for the record, we've also asked that we state the Liaison Committee too.
Correct.
Okay.
And we would keep it the same members.
And Mr. Levinson is still the alternate?
Yeah.
So do we have a motion?
I move.
For 114 through 118?
I move.
I'll say, moved by, sorry?
As modified.
As modified, yeah. Moved by trustee Davis Ford, seconded by trustee Schnall. Do we have the roll, please?
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson? Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Thank you. Excuse me, statutory boards and commissions, resolution 119, resolution appointing a trustee liaison to the Board of Health. Trustee Davis Ford. Resolution 120, resolution appointing a trustee liaison to the Environmental Commission, trustee Clark. And I'll skip over the village... president's appointments, he could read them at the end. Resolution 121, resolution appointing a trustee as a Class III member of the South Orange Planning Board, trustee Rosner. Resolution 122, resolution appointing a trustee representative to the South Orange Public Library, trustee Davis Ford. Resolution 123, resolution appointing a trustee and alternate trustee liaison to the South Orange Parking Authority, trustee Rosner, trustee Column, trustee Levinson. Resolution 124, resolution appointing a trustee liaison to the South Orange Historic Preservation Commission, trustee Schnall. Resolution 125, resolution appointing a trustee to the South Orange Village Center Alliance Board of Directors, trustee Schnall.
Okay. That was 125? Okay, so do I have a motion for-
Did you, you didn't do the VP?
No, well, those aren't by resolution. So this is for 119 through 125? You have a motion?
So move.
Moved by trustee Levinson, seconded by trustee Schnall. Have the roll, please?
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the two appointments that are, that are my appointments are to the Planning Board. One is a Class I member, which is myself, and the second is a Class II member, which is trustee Rosner.
Isn't he the Class III member? Who's the Class III, 121?
That would probably be Adam, yeah. And I guess the Class III member is appointed by resolution, unlike the other two?
That was listed as Rosner.
Yeah. Which one was?
What, the 121?
Was Class III.
Oh, was it?
It was.
Yeah, trustee Rosner.
Yeah, trustee Rosner is listed twice. So you have to fill out both those positions, double the meetings.
Get two votes at the meeting.
Well, so, from the, from the language of the resolutions, it looks like-
I think Adam was the Class II.
Yeah, exactly. The Class III is the trustee, and Adam is the Class II.
Do we have to go?
No, that's your appointment.
That's your appointment, so you have to change it to Adam.
Right.
Yeah, so it doesn't change what we voted on.
That's right, because the board chooses the Class III member.
Yeah.
Right, because it's a representative form.
So you want to restate your appointment?
Yeah, so I'll restate my appointment, which is to a Class II member of the Planning Board, which is to Adam Lerner.
Okay.
And the Class III, which is trustee Rosner, has already been passed under resolution. We can do advisory committees?
Okay, Resolution 126, resolution appointing a trustee liaison to the Cable Television Committee, trustee Levinson. Resolution 127, appointing a trustee and alternate trustee liaison to the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, trustee Levinson and trustee Rosner. Resolution 128, resolution appointing a trustee liaison to the Citizens Public Safety Advisory Committee, trustee Column. Resolution 129, resolution appointing a trustee and alternate trustee representative to the Community Relations Committee, trustee Davis Ford, trustee Schnall. Resolution 130, resolution appointing two trustee representatives to the Culture Affairs Advisory Committee, trustee Schnall, trustee Davis Ford. Resolution 131, resolution appointing a trustee and alternate trustee representative to the Development Committee, trustee Rosner, trustee Column. Resolution 132, resolution appointing a trustee liaison to the Energy Policies Study Committee, trustee Clark. Resolution appointing a trustee liaison to the Open Space Advisory Committee, trustee Clark. Resolution 134, resolution appointing two trustee representatives to the Recreation Advisory Committee, trustee Davis Ford, trustee Clark. Resolution 135, resolution appointing a trustee liaison to the Senior Citizens Affairs Advisory Committee, trustee Column. Resolution 136, resolution appointing three trustee representatives to the Shared Services Committee, trustee Levinson, trustee Column, village president Torpe. Resolution 137, resolution appointing a trustee liaison to the South Orange Seton Hall University Partnership, trustee Column. And may I make a note for the record to add trustee Davis Ford to that Resolution 137. Resolution 138, resolution appointing a trustee liaison to the Transportation Advisory Committee, trustee Rosner. Resolution 139, to approve payment for tree service work completed on, at 469 Prospect Street. Resolution 140, resolution authorizing the cancellation of a tax sale premium. And there was also an add-on resolution, Resolution 142, resolution appointing a village representative to the River Greenway Committee, and that is trustee Clark.
Is that 141 or 142?
142.
It's 142, because the introduction of the budget is 141? Okay.
I have a question. We recently created the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee, and I didn't notice it until now, is that it's not listed. It was passed this year, so it's very recent, so I'm not sure if it needs to be on this list. Should it be on this list?
I think it should.
And we never amended it to include you also.
So if you have, especially if you did, if you made any amendments or edits, why don't we add it?
Can we add-
Because that will make sure that it'll get done next year, too.
That's perfect, yeah. Do the resolutions stop at 141 right now in terms of the numbering?
142, so it would be 143.
Could we please add Resolution 2014-143, resolution, resolution appointing trustee liaisons to the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee, trustee Column, trustee Schnall, trustee Rosner, and trustee Davis Ford?
Two were main and two were-
Yeah, the two primary were both myself and trustee Schnall, and then trustee Rosner and trustee Davis Ford as alternates.
Alternates, yeah.
Can I have, Barry, did you include the voice recording system?
Well, I have it. Are we doing that now, or are we doing, I thought there was-
Well, why don't we-
I don't know, because we did the other resolutions.
We had, let me look, maybe wasn't caught up on whether that was the end of, is this the last resolutions we have? We had a, the voice recording system at the Police Department. We knew it was going, and we, through Finance and IT, and in conjunction with the Police Department of evaluating a number of options, gotten a number of proposals. It is funded in the 2014 bond ordinance that will actually be effective tomorrow. So typically, we would have waited until the next meeting. However, it's become a rather dire situation now, where it's failed recently. And so, what we would like, if possible, would be to add a resolution that I have, and I didn't have the opportunity to print it, but I can read it into the record, to allow us, and it would essentially authorize us to go forward with a purchase order tomorrow, once it become, because the bond ordinance, 20 days after publication, will be tomorrow. So, if I, you want to bear with me, resolution accepting proposal of Micro Strategies, Inc., and awarding contract under New Jersey State Contract T-0109 for voice recording system to be used in the South Orange Police Department in amount not to exceed $31,909, whereas Township of South Orangeville has a need for voice recording system in the South Orange Police Department, as the current system is outdated and failing, and whereas the village received a proposal for Micro Strategies under New Jersey State Contract T-0109 for the provision of a Nice Voice Recording System. And of course, my connection just failed. Bear with me. Can't make it up. Connection lost, reconnecting.
You want to quickly just improv a resolution for, you know, maybe some IT?
Reading the title is sufficient.
I do have a question, though, just, I mean, that wasn't listed on the agenda. So, I would just, I would defer to Mr. Rother. I mean, as far as adding a resolution to add members to the, I don't think anybody cares, but-
That's not a problem.
Adding a resolution to authorize spending?
No, this is, this is a regular scheduled meeting, was scheduled. It's not a special meeting. You can add a resolution.
And it's an emergent need, because the system's failing, and it's public safety.
Okay, let's just try and make it get those listed.
I don't know if you want me to finish reading it. Whereas proposal, another is reviewed by Finance and IT Committee and the Village Administrator, Police Chief and Captains, and the IT Director, and whereas group has recommended the acceptance of the Micro Strategies, Inc. proposal, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees Township of South Orangeville, hereby accepts detached proposal of an awards contract W to Micro Strategies, Inc., under New Jersey State Contract T-0109 for voice recording system in amount not to exceed $31,909. Be it further resolved, village president or village administrator and village clerk hereby authorized to execute a contract for said system contingent upon the availability of funds certified by the villages. Chief Finance Officer, which funds will be available under the 2014 bond ordinance as of May 20, 2014, and whereas be it further resolved, village clerk shall confirm with the Board of Trustees when the certification available funds has been received from the Chief Finance Officer.
Yeah, and you answered my question, because I thought it was important, because I remember there were a series of meetings with all the appropriate people vetting the different systems, and were able to determine on an informed basis and select the vendor that you just identified. So, that's in the resolution.
Just so you know, the company's name is Nice, so you kept saying Nice.
But it's the company's Micro Strategies, the product is called Nice Voice Recording. Yeah, it's not just a subjective assessment of the product.
And this is very time-sensitive.
So you want to move, Column?
Okay, so that will be, that would be for resolutions 126 through 143, not including 141.
I move.
Or, sorry, 144.
Not including 141.
Not including 141. There's a motion by trustee Schnall, a second by trustee Levinson?
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you.
And my two appointments for the advisory committees, one is to the Public Information and Marketing Committee, which is trustee Schnall. Although, I think we want to update that at some point, trustee Levinson, if you're still wanting to do that, so we have two trustee liaisons. And then the other is to the New Jersey Transit Advisory Committee, which is trustee Rosner.
So are you adding trustee Levinson, since he said yes, or is that at a future date?
Yeah, we can amend that appointment to include two trustee liaisons, because the committee was created by declaration, anyway.
And trustee Clark is, I mean, is to the-
Okay.
All right, so what committee we're talking about, Public Information-
Can you do as an alternate?
Kind of a problem with that?
Okay. Okay. We'll update that accordingly. And we can move on to our minutes.
Mr. President, for your benefit, our guest is here for the presentation, whenever you're ready for her.
Oh, excellent. Let's see. Why don't we just do the minutes real quick, and then she can come up?
Great.
So we have April 17th special meeting, April 17th conference meeting, and April 28th regular meeting.
I move.
Moved by trustee Rosner, seconded by trustee Levinson. All in favor? Any opposed abstentions? Okay. All right. So we have a presentation this evening on Irvington Ave. redevelopment, rehabilitation by our planner, Ms. Garof. Would you like to come up? Thank you for being here tonight. Yeah, you can come.
Hello, everybody. I'd just like to give you an update as to, as to the options and the recommendations that the advisory committee has, has spoken about regarding the different tools available to a municipality to revitalize Irvington Avenue. And as you all know, the revitalization of Irvington Avenue has been in your planning documents for years. That has been now brought to the forefront in terms of your advisory committee. And there was discussion at the last advisory committee meeting, when I attended, regarding what tools would be most appropriate to move forward with. And there are several tools available, obviously rezoning is one. And that tends to be, as you know, you rezone, and it's, it tends to be more reactive. You wait for development and for improvements to occur. There are several other under the redevelopment statute. You certainly, this board is well aware of the redevelopment statute, has used it before very successfully. And there have been recent amendments to the redevelopment law, so that there are just a couple of options that are now available. The, what had been up until December of 2013 were two redevelopment options. One is to declare an area in need of redevelopment. With that, there were certain powers that went along with that. The key that everyone focuses on is the power of eminent domain, and also 30-year tax abatement. That continues to be an option available. Subsequent to December of last year, there is a variation on the theme, which is redevelopment without condemnation, a non-condemnation option. What that did was, it was in reaction to a number of legal cases and, and public sensitivity to condemnation, so that that is an option that a municipality may choose when they ask a, when the governing body asks a municipal, a planning board to investigate an area, they can choose the non-condemnation option, okay, which takes condemnation off the table, but also continues to permit 30-year tax abatement. There is also another option under the redevelopment statute that was discussed extensively with Irvington Avenue, which is what I would call the softer, gentler redevelopment option, which is rehabilitation. And that is all the powers of redevelopment except for two. One is condemnation again. It is not a permitted option under the statute. And the second is, the long-term tax abatement is not available. Short-term, five-year tax abatement is available. It has all the other benefits of declaring an area in need of redevelopment or rehabilitation in terms of being more proactive than just rezoning. And it also permits the municipality and various groups to be a little bit more flexible in terms of encouraging development and speaking with property owners, and providing the powers that, that can be more, again, proactive in revitalizing Irvington Avenue Corridor. We discussed these different options with the advisory committee, and the advisory committee recommended that the rehabilitation option, or where appropriate, the redevelopment option, be utilized. There are very specific criteria were considered. There are very specific criteria in order to designate an area in need of redevelopment, whether it be under non-condemnation or condemnation. And there are less rigid criteria under the rehabilitation option. And in most instances, probably along Irvington Avenue, the rehabilitation standard would probably work in most instances. It gives the option, it gives a little bit of more, of a greater tool, but doesn't, isn't as heavy-handed, I guess, what I would say. So that that kind of gives an overview of the different options that were discussed. There was discussion at the advisory committee about what the study boundaries would be and should be. Obviously, the focus is on the frontage lots along Irvington Avenue, particularly in the areas where there tends to be more commercial development, either commercial development now, or where the most appropriate location would be for commercial development, and potentially mixed-use development, potentially retail, office, potential residential as well. The intent for the advisory committee, I think, was, again, to focus on the frontage lots, and also not necessarily- and also not necessarily to get involved with those properties that are single-family and owner-occupied. And so there was a sensitivity to that as well. That I certainly am more than happy to answer any questions that anyone may have, but I just wanted to give an overview as to what the options were in the context of revitalization.
The real question here also for the board is, we want to authorize doing a study.
I can't hear you.
Excuse me?
Could hear you.
Can't hear you.
We want to do a study. Everything I would like is to do a study, to entertain doing a study of the three different options for the Irvington Avenue area. It wasn't just, we don't have to make a decision tonight on which option we're going to do. The question is, can we do a study on this, on the three options and see which one would work best for the village and for Irvington Avenue?
I think that, you know, we have three clear options and it would make sense to do a study so that we can make the best decision possible with, you know, looking for the desired results.
If it would be helpful, Susan, I'm sorry, I didn't start off by giving a little introduction. Just for the benefit of the public that may have not watched some of our prior meetings, I just want to go over the advisory committee and some of the market research that led to inviting Ms. Gruehl to the advisory committee meeting and even starting the process of discussing the study. So I'm sorry, it sounds like Groundhog Day. We're going through this again on the board level. But the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee was created earlier this year. It's comprised of four residents. One of our members is actually in the audience, Olivia Lewis Chang, who ran the event this past Sunday, Cleanup Green Up. Thanks, Olivia. We have the four residents. We have two business owners. We have a representative from Seton Hall University. We have a liaison to our development committee. And we have four trustee liaisons also. So it's pretty... Is that my microphone? Maybe? Good. So it's a pretty diverse group of different stakeholders involved with this initiative. Oh, I'm sorry. And we also have a member from our staff, our administrator, Mr. Lewis. We began this process doing market research with Seton Hall University and surveying three different categories of folks in the community. There was the residents who surround Irvington Avenue, specifically the Seton Village neighborhood and also Village Colonials. Those are the neighborhood districts that are the closest to this business corridor. The Seton Hall community comprised of the students, faculty, and staff, and also the business and property owners. And as a subcategory from that, their customers. From this research, we touched close to 600 people over the course of four months. Focus groups, lots of surveys, electronic. We also leaf-litted the neighborhoods to try and make sure that those who didn't have access to electronic communications could participate and drop off a survey. So it was relatively robust. And I shared the data with everybody on the Board of Trustees. And one thing as it relates to development or redevelopment options was that overwhelmingly, people were very enthusiastic about some of these opportunities, big differences for the corridor. And as Ms. Gruehl indicated, that if you go back to your planning documents from the Board of Trustees dating back 20 years, this has kind of been discussed and talked about in committees. And it just hasn't been a priority for the village up until this point because you were really focused on the central business district. And we see some of the great success that the community has had because of those focused efforts. So now moving on to the next business corridor, it made natural sense with indication from Seton Hall University and their willingness to want to partner with us. And also just the enthusiasm of this Board of Trustees and those, the folks in the neighborhood, that this would be a great place to start focusing some of our planning efforts and development efforts. So from the surveys and the responses that we got from that, the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee asked that Ms. Gruehl come and talk in a broad sense about what all these quote-unquote redevelopment tools are. And that's where we ended up today. So you all received the memo, not just about Irvington Avenue, but some redevelopment discussion from our planner that talks about some of the series of changes that she noted. One thing that I would ask, and I might be asking some leading questions just to make sure we get everything on the record and ask questions that I would think that the public would be interested in. We could also have a mix between an area in need of rehabilitation and then specific redevelopment zone sites?
Yes, you can, as long as the criteria are met with respect to those sites that are quote designated area in need of redevelopment and area in need of rehabilitation.
To add to that, so would that extend to a block where there, let's say there's 10 properties on the block and five or six of them are maintained fairly well and there may be just two properties on that one block? Can it drill down to be bifurcated to that extent?
Yes, it can. What would happen is, in terms of process and what you would do potentially, is you would determine and ask the planning board to prepare a study. And you would ask them through resolution and give them the boundary, the map, of what the study area would be and what you would like them to look at, whether it is only, if it's all three options, but really it's two, but you have to identify what those options are. And then the study would occur under the statutory criteria for each of those different designations or potential designations. And then they would hold the public hearing for that, if it's studied as a redevelopment area. And then it would come back here ultimately for you to determine whether you agree with them, you would modify, you disagree, whatever it would be, and then you would adopt that by resolution. The next, if it was determined to be an area of something, and it could be a mix, it could definitely be a mix of one parcel is this, it meets the criteria as an area in need of redevelopment, the remaining would be an area in need of rehab, again, which is the softer, gentler approach. You can mix and match. And then the next phase, as you know, is preparation of a, it's called a redevelopment plan, whether it's a rehab plan or in a mix of rehab redevelopment. And that's where it's this hybrid of master plan and zoning together. But you can mix and match.
Next question would be that if we do receive a designation as an area in need of redevelopment, we don't have to use all of those powers. We can go to the very, like, once you get an area in need of redevelopment, you can use everything under that. So you might have a short-term tax abatement or you might have the ability to use eminent domain but not choose to use it. So you kind of have a menu after you receive that designation?
Kind of.
Okay.
Not really, because after the redevelopment law amendments that went into effect December of 2013, now upfront, when this body chooses, if they do, to ask for a study, they in their resolution must determine whether they want it studied as a non-condemnation or a condemnation redevelopment area. Now, if you choose, let's say, and a rehab area, rehab area is pretty much the same as it was, but procedurally. Say you choose to do a non-condemnation redevelopment area to begin with, even though the criteria are the same under redevelopment, either option. Say you want to move forward with non-condemnation. And as you move forward, you realize, oh, my goodness, there may be some parcels where you would like to use the power of eminent domain. You can go back and again, choose to amend and go through the study to say, well, we're going to need to use because of whatever, the condemnation option. And then you would have to go through the process again. But you can do that. You can change your approach if the one option works or doesn't work, whatever. But that's the way it's set up now. I must say, since it's only been in effect for, what, five months, really? Not many entities have gone through the process under this new process and really kind of seen how it works. There've been a lot of questions about it. I've sat on panels regarding that and there's, nobody seems to have all the answers on how it actually is going to work.
I didn't realize that. That actually, it makes no sense whatsoever why you wouldn't take the, I'll bring it up with the legislature. But if you, what's the benefit for indicating that it's a non-condemnation study that you're trying to do if ultimately the powers, other than the one controversial one, is still going to be the same? Would you not want to study everything and then the Board of Trustees or the planning board indicate that it's not going to be condemnation redevelopment?
Well, the difference is, under either redevelopment options, condemnation or non-condemnation, the 30-year tax abatement is available. And oftentimes, that's what redevelopers are looking for, more than the eminent domain.
Sure.
The, of course, one of the reasons why the legislature did what they did with this new amendment is again, because of all the uproar and the legal cases on the use of eminent domain and the sensitivity to that. So they, I think the reasoning was, I'm not going to presume to speak for the state legislature, but that the use of the redevelopment statute would be more, would be less onerous and be more of a tool if that option were available and that there wouldn't be as much of an outcry.
Even during the study period?
We, I'm sorry. One of the issues that we have is, if you're using the non-condemnation option versus the condemnation option, but the criteria remain the same.
Yeah.
It seems to be a bit unusual. So I, you know, I don't know anything more than that. That's the way it's set up. So it does seem, if you're using the same criteria, why you wouldn't have that option, oftentimes, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, I just think that's unfortunate because you want to kind of study, at least what came from our Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee was to study as much as possible and just see what the opportunities were without creating any level of fear or the government wants to quote-unquote "take property." Let's not involve ourselves with any of that yet. Let's just objectively look at a study and see what criteria we would meet. And while, you know, the entire corridor may not be something that anyone would consider a condemnation, there might be parcels that meet statutory requirements for blight. And so we don't want to restrict ourselves from looking at everything and getting the greatest powers, if need be, that the governing body could use if they so deemed appropriate.
Your comment is very rational. Oftentimes, as you well know, the state doesn't necessarily, when you read some of the laws that come into effect, they aren't necessarily all obvious or logical.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm kind of asking all the questions. I can let the other trustees, if you have questions, and I'll fill in any more gaps that I think there might be.
I think some of the questions are probably getting ahead of it too, because I think really the main focus is, do we want to do this study? And see what happens. I think a lot of these questions will be answered during the study and a lot of the questions will come up at that point. Because if the study comes back and says we should do an area in need of rehabilitation, a lot of these questions
We can't hear you.
A lot of these questions go off the table. And if it's an area in need of redevelopment, then we can discuss it.
But what I think she was saying is that you have to specify that before you go into it.
It's changed.
No, we want to study all three.
No, that's what we're just talking about, is that we want to... When the group met, it was essentially what I just said, is that we want to see what all the options were available. And even if you met the criteria, the statutory requirements of being an area in need of redevelopment, that you still had much lesser options to choose from if that's what you wanted to do. Even if you had the ability to do a long-term tax abatement, that's something more modest would be within the menu. Even if you had the ability to use eminent domain, the governing body would say, that's not something we're interested in doing. So even though it's available, we're moving in a different direction.
But I want to understand, she said the statute has changed. Now you have to declare what option you're interested in studying.
Yeah, is that correct? For purposes of the study, you have to say?
Yes.
You can't include in the study both redevelopment options?
You have to determine whether the redevelopment, which redevelopment...
You can only choose one?
You can only choose one upfront. And you can always go back and amend it. That's, you can always go back and start over again?
But when you go back to amend it, it's not simply just amending it. You have to do the study.
Well...
You have to do a study again, right?
Very good point, but what my comment would be on that, and I've heard this comment made not only by me, so I won't take it as... Is if you've already determined that you've met the criteria as a non-condemnation redevelopment area and you choose to do a condemnation redevelopment area and the criteria are exactly the same, and it's not that the distance, like, it's not years later and the conditions haven't changed. It would seem logical that you then have less of a study. You would say you've already done all this and the conditions haven't changed and therefore the criteria is met. You're just changing your option as such. But nobody knows whether, nobody's gone through that, at least not that I'm aware of.
But if you're declaring that beforehand, after the study is done, doesn't that preclude you from having the option to, on a case-by-case basis, determine for one property or another which would be the best option? Or is that what you're saying, that you can go back and review? It's just...
You can start again and procedurally start again. You upfront in your resolution would say, direct the plan, this is just if you choose to do this. You would direct the planning board to study a certain area and you would determine the boundary and the block and lot. And to determine whether that area met either and/or the rehab criteria and the redevelopment criteria, but then you would have to say, under non-condemnation or under condemnation. Or under both, I guess you could do that too, but it would be the same.
So for purposes of authorizing the study, you could authorize it for all three options?
I guess you could. I guess you could.
So it sounds like there's still a lot of gray area here with this new statute that it might, we may be a test case just to
It is very new.
Say, let's do a study for all three options and see what happens.
Also sounds like a lot of circling around.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that most communities have opted to do, to either default to rehabilitation or they've defaulted to, they would tend to go to the non-condemnation unless they know a specific parcel that they would like. But I must say that, and you found this out too, I think there was only one that you've seen. In most instances, the threat of condemnation is enough. It doesn't require actually condemnation to ever occur. I've seen it rarely here, once, on one parcel. I've seen it in another community in one instance. But most of the time, it doesn't, it doesn't require a formal...
Susan, so the question, then we have, if you have the threat of condemnation, you also, the reverse is, we have a reverse condemnation lawsuit possibility against the village, which we've had before too. So that option, that's on the table too, if you do condemnation.
I would presume.
You're suggesting that designating it in a redevelopment zone with eminent domain as an option would give grounds for an inverse condemnation action? That would seem to be quite a stretch.
I've only...
No, not at all. I mean, do the other things have to accompany that action in order to be...
But it happens. But I would go along with the suggestion that we study all three.
And just to be clear, if we do study the option with eminent domain, A, that doesn't commit the village to condemning any properties at all. And each property, then that policy decision ultimately, because the criteria are the same. The policy decision could then be made, you sort of, you keep that weapon in your arsenal, so to speak, but the policy decision is made on a case-by-case... so to speak, but the policy decision is made on a case-by-case basis as a need arises, if a particular property is sufficiently blighted, neglected, and either the ownership hasn't changed, and there are no particular prospects, and you feel like you don't have an option. But you, you know, to me, then, I think that's important to reserve that option and have it out on the table. But again, it's just by commissioning the study, and quite frankly, even then approving it if it comes back and it's authorized, then moving forward with a redevelopment designation with condemnation does not in any way indicate that there ever will be any eminent domain. And in fact, under our current redevelopment, we have always had that option and have never utilized it. Correct?
Well, that's the interesting, but what's interesting is, is that by statute, the redevelopment plan must have a statement regarding what parcels, whether eminent domain will be used, and whether it's on any parcels, none, whatever. So, that's always been part of the redevelopment statute, that the redevelopment plan has to have that. And that still remains part of what has to be put in a redevelopment plan. I gather that, you know, it's that catch-22 where we've heard this time and time again, is, "Well, how do we know whether we should object? Because this is only the study phase, and we don't know what you're proposing, and we don't know what's in the plan, and we don't know whether you're planning on using eminent domain or not." So, it's kind of this catch-22 in terms of timing. First, you have to study the area to determine whether it meets the criteria, but you don't necessarily know what you're going to do with the area, or whether you're going to use eminent domain until you finish the study and designate it. And then you, and then by the designation, you've declared it, quote, "blighted," or that there's a public purpose. So.
Susan, one of the statements that I made at the Advisory Committee meeting, and I just want to know whether you agreed with it. In terms of Irvington Avenue, do you think, just having worked in the village for a long time, that due to the aging, like the housing stock, how old our buildings are, that it would meet the requirement for rehabilitation relatively? I don't want to say easily, but knowing what you know about that corridor?
Yes. I think that, from the information that I'm aware of and that we've gathered, yes, I would say that that would definitely meet the rehabilitation, the area in need of rehabilitation, which goes to, the one criteria for that is, the majority of the housing stock is over 50 years old, and it doesn't mean it's substandard. It just means that it's 50 years old and can use, you know, maybe a program of maintenance, which can provide that upgrade for residents to say, put an improvement on their house or whatever, and there's a bit of a tax incentive there for a little while, not for a long time. So, there is that incentive for residential property owners to do that. The area in need of redevelopment is, the criteria are more complex.
And that's probably something to really emphasize for the benefit of the public, is that it's very technical. It's not you and a couple people deciding, "Yeah, it'd be cool to make this a redevelopment zone." That is very rigid, technical, and you either meet the requirements or you don't.
And there is, there have been numerous cases recently regarding what's called net opinion and substantial evidence. There needs to be, it can't be just an expert saying, "Yeah, it looks like a redevelopment area," which used to be the way that it was done. No longer. There has to be substantial factual evidence that can be used to draw an opinion as to whether it meets one of, at least one of the criteria. But it can't just be me going out, going down the street and saying, "Yeah, yeah, that's good, that one is good, that one's good, that one's good." No, that doesn't work that way anymore, and shouldn't, frankly.
And that's the purpose and the requirement of the study, because the study
That's what
You have to capture all the facts that exist as-is. It's supposed to be a really objective assessment of what exists.
That's exactly. And that's the substantial evidence that provides the basis for determining whether it satisfies any of the criteria.
Does anybody else have any questions? I would suggest, based on what we heard from the committee members, and I think that perhaps we didn't understand that you had to specify in advance, but the overall goal was, again, to get as much out of the study as possible. So, perhaps if the board agrees and we would like to move forward with the study, we can work between Ms. Gruehl and Village Council on making sure whatever resolution that we want to bring to the planning board is the most holistic, that grabs rehab, condemnation, non-condemnation, and see what makes the most sense and what would be appropriate, with the intention being, we want it to get the biggest, widest net for a study.
I would be interested in moving forward.
Do you want to have consensus right now?
Yes.
Yes.
See? Walter?
I'll say yes.
We're all in.
Sounds like there's consensus.
Okay, great. And one last thing, Mr. President, if it's okay. Ms. Louis Chang is representing the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee. Can we see if she has any additional comments to add to what Ms. Gruehl had?
And also want to bring her up and congratulate her for leading a great effort on Saturday. Sunday, right?
On Sunday.
On Sunday.
No additional comments, just a question.
Sorry, if you're going to say anything, you have to come up to the microphone.
The mic right there.
Hi. I don't have any additional comments, really. I think the committee wanted to have as wide a base as possible. I think we were talking more about, you know, trying to have a study to understand all the options. So, that's about it.
Can you put your name on the record?
Where?
Just say it.
Okay, Olivia Louis Chang. Excuse me?
Address?
Oh, 89 Riggs Place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, it sounds like we have a plan. And also, Trustee Rosner, if we can go just a little bit more detail with the map at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. I didn't want to discuss it here at the board meeting before bringing it to your committee first. Is that another thing we can push on your agenda for Wednesday?
Is that?
Great, all set. Thanks so much, Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to see you all.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, at this time, I'll, let's see, move on to our ordinance first.
Ordinance 2014-11, an ordinance to sue the municipal budget appropriation limits to establish a cap bank pursuant to NJSA 48:4-45.14.
Thank you. Especially because this title includes exceeds limits, just give an explanation.
Sure, just briefly, and those that regularly follow us know, we do this every year. Under New Jersey, under the Reference Statute 48, 4-45.14, there's a 2.5% cap, not to be confused with the tax levy cap, which is a 2% cap, but there's an appropriation cap, subject to certain exceptions, where your appropriations from year to year cannot exceed 2.5%. The law permits us to adopt by ordinance and authorize us to exceed and to bump that up to 3.5%. The purpose in doing that is to establish what's called a cap bank, so that if in a future year, the cap bank lasts for two years, and then it drops off and gets replaced by subsequent year, is to provide you some additional cushion in the event of unforeseen circumstances, unexpected expenses. So, in this case, it authorizes us, conceivably, our budget could go up by 880 something, I don't have it right in front of me, $1,000. The budget as proposed does not anywhere approach that. The overall budget increase is about a little over $300,000. So, theoretically, we could go up over $800,000. The proposal's only to go up about $300,000. This would then establish a bank for future years. It's just sound planning. It doesn't have any impact on taxes, does not increase taxes or otherwise affect the property owners, other than to create that contingency.
Thank you. You have a motion?
I have a question.
Yep.
Again, I may have missed it. What's the overall percentage increase?
Well, I'll get to that, I mean, we'll get to that when we talk about the budget.
Okay, moved by Trustee Levison.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Column. Do we have a roll, please?
Trustee Rosner. Trustee Schnall.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Column.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levison.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2014-12, an ordinance establishing 2014 sewer uses, user charges and assessments.
Okay, this is fairly self-explanatory, although this does contain another year of the one-time fee that we've discussed here a couple times. So, unless there's any kind of further questions or comments about that.
Yes, I do have. We were talking about this today. How do we now adjust the date due on the sewer charge?
We actually, the due date with the bills that went out was May 30th, but it has a 30-day grace period, so that the delinquency would not be until June 30th, which would be after the ordinance is in effect. So, I think we're covered. The bills went out earlier than, I think they already went out, but essentially, people have had them, will have a full six, over seven weeks to pay before any delinquency.
But it still doesn't have a 30-day grace period, given that we have to pass the ordinance. Or are you going to extend that date?
Well, I think the thinking is that the bills went out based on these fees, based upon the resolution. It was later determined by council that the appropriate way to do it would be by ordinance, so that the bills are out with the correct amounts, the ordinance will go on, and we will have the public hearing adopted prior to the June 30th date. So, I think we're covered in the sense that people, you know, A, the fee will be legal, and B, they will have ample time and notice to pay.
But the statement that it has a 30-day grace period no longer holds?
The, well, there is, I mean, a 30-day grace period from when the bill went out, they'll have more than 30 days. 30-day grace period from the technical effective date of the ordinance, no.
Okay.
Did we also say that we were going to post something to the village website about this in particular, and just explaining why we're seeing this for a second year when we previously indicated?
Yeah, to that, to Trustee Column's point, for those in the public, we did, last year was the first year, we saw a dramatic spike in our assessment from the joint meeting that handles all our sewage. It increased from 2012 to 2013 by about $200,000, which was pretty much entirely attributable to expenses incurred by the joint meeting in defending the Passaic River pollution litigation by which certain industrial polluters who were being sued by the state government, third-party complained in other entities to try and hold them liable as well. We got our proportional share of those costs, which caused our overall assessment to increase by about $200,000. The thinking by initially, I think it was the Finance Committee that reviewed it and recommended, and ultimately the full board, was that the more appropriate way to address that increase was to do it via a sort of dedicated assessment, which worked out to $25 per unit. We have approximately 8,000 units, which would generate the $200,000, the thinking being that rather than just roll it into the base rate, that it would always be kind of baked in there, and then when the litigation went away, we'd just have a windfall, that it was more appropriate to do it as a separate. Now, regrettably, last year, at the time we were doing this, we believed that a settlement was imminent in the state litigation, and that it would hopefully be a one-time charge. As most of you are certainly aware, and probably the public, if they follow this, the settlement dragged on, the litigation dragged on, there ultimately was and is in place a settlement in the state litigation, but the joint meeting continued to incur expenses, and you will see, our assessment is still up in the $970,000, $980,000 range, or roughly the same $200,000 above. So, regrettably, there's a need, obviously, if we don't do it this way by including it in the sewer assessment, we have to pay the bill regardless. It would fall under the general budget, it would then be borne exclusively by the taxpayers, whereas if it's in the sewer utility, it is borne by a number of other sewer, you know, system users, including the educational institution, Seton Hall, other users of the sewer system who may not otherwise pay taxes. So, it's clearly related to the sewer, it seems appropriate to include it in the sewer budget. Regrettably, I can also foreshadow that there is potential that this could continue, because we've recently learned that the federal government, the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, is apparently on the verge, and Mr. Rother could weigh in if necessary, of instituting their own litigation, which will just inevitably, they will pursue the polluters, the polluters will once again, third-party in all the public entities, and will, it'll be like Groundhog Day, we'll start all over again. So, unfortunately, fortunately, there was a settlement reached in the state. Ideally, we hope to have some similar parameters of a settlement in the federal, but that hasn't even been filed yet. So, we won't be calling it one time, but we will certainly be calling it clearly attributable to this litigation and those excess costs, with the full intention that when those costs go away and our assessment from the joint meeting returns to its sort of historic level, obviously with cost of living increases that would have otherwise have occurred, that the intention would be to reduce then the fees to correspond to that actual sewer treatment assessment.
These, this litigation's not only against towns, though, in the joint sewer, it goes all the way up the river. So, how many, I forgot how many towns were in it all together.
Hundreds.
Well, 30 parties as well, 700. There were 700 parties to the lawsuit.
Oh, sure.
And so, you know, we talk about this litigation, which is now, how many millions?
I would say billions.
The number is enormous.
Oh, they're huge. They're huge. And by the time you get to the cleanup costs, because we're just engaged right now in the litigation of the issues, it could be enormous.
So, back to the original question, can we post a blurb on the website about?
Yeah, we will. And yeah, so the original question was, last year, we put up, and I will update that to include all the more current information to fully explain, and that will be on the website.
All right, is there a motion?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Column.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Davis Ford. Do we have a roll, please?
Trustee Schnall.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Column.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levison.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Thank you. I move that ordinance number 2014-11 and 2014-12 be scheduled for a second reading and final passage at the June 23, 2014, board meeting, and a public hearing be held. At that time, for the reference ordinance, the village clerk has been authorized to take the necessary actions to publish such public notice for such hearing.
Could I suggest amend the public hearing date to June 9th meeting? Particularly for the sewer one, and particularly the other one, you could do either one, but certainly the sewer one.
So, you want to do both for June 9?
You can do both on June 9.
Okay, there's a motion by Trustee Davis Ford.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Levison. All in favor? Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you. We can move on to ordinances for second reading.
Ordinances for second reading, 2014-03, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend and restate the Central Business District redevelopment plan in its entirety.
Thank you. So, because this is on public, second reading and public hearing, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up to any members of the public who wish to speak about this ordinance in particular. Just please come forward, just state your name and address, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Andy Weimberger, 311 Prospect Street, South Orange. A 27-year resident of South Orange, my son, of course, is a happy and proud graduate of the schools of South Orange. I'm a physician, and some of these comments I gave last time this was up a few months ago, about five years ago, I tried to find an office to move into in South Orange as a doctor, and I could not find a suitable office. There were and are virtually none. At the moment, actually, I've been employed by Overlook Hospital for the last five days. I'm a rheumatologist in practice, and I'm now employed by them, but I have a practice. It's in West Orange. However, I think it's important that doctors be allowed to practice on side streets in appropriate facilities in town. I think it's good for doctors, it's good for patients in town who want to see doctors in town and not have to travel far away to see them. I would not be a member of the practice or the area I'm talking about. I think having the doctors in town and off the avenue on a side street is a good thing, because there aren't very many of us around. The side streets are not prime retail areas, even on the ground floor, and would make fine professional offices. Patients visiting the doctors will utilize local establishments. If they want to violate their doctor's orders and have a nice lunch at Trotteria, that would be nice, or they could go to the post office or go to some other establishments and bring some money to downtown. They can visit Ashley Market. And I really can't see a disadvantage to having doctors on ground floors off the avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is John McGriff, 394 Irving Avenue. I am in support of the doctor's office being downtown on the side street with conversation with my family. I think we're consistently saying that it would provide a reason to come downtown and take advantage of the other services that downtown South Orange offers. Orange offers. And personally, myself, for one, would definitely multitask my visit with an appointment to take care of other local businesses and support those businesses during that doctor activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just come forward and just state your name and address, please.
Bob Adler, 120 Rawson. I just had a question. What do you all think are, or some representative think are, the three most significant changes in what is now proposed from what we have? I think that'll be helpful for the public, just to get a handle on what it all is.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Leslie.
Yeah, just come on down.
I live at 10 Hart Drive in South Orange, a lifelong resident, and a five-generation business owner in town. And I welcome the fact that we can have a vibrant downtown and bring in customers throughout the daytime. And this is, Dr. Schneider is a resident, a local doctor who wants to invest in the town that he lives in. And one of the other doctors in the practice is from Maplewood. I can only see a win-win as a business owner. I'm not usually open in the daytime, but you need that foot traffic. It really, really, and I'm on the committee also, and I really would welcome this as another business owner. Please consider your votes tonight, and I hope you vote affirmative, yes, for doctor, for this.
Thank you. Turn.
I guess I might be it for tonight. John Rosalini, 99 Before Ave, Summit, New Jersey, the site of Overlook Medical Center, Atlantic Health System. I've had the honor of speaking to you several times over the last, oh, probably a year and a half. I'm talking tonight about the second reading on the ordinance for downtown. As we've discussed, as we all know, master plans, business development zones, things like that are living, breathing documents that change over time and change with our communities. Medical uses are not what they were. Professional offices on the first floor off the main streets of downtowns are something now that's extremely desirable, something that's being sought after. They're being courted even into shopping malls because of the traffic that they do bring to the downtown business district, and they're another part of the fabric of the community. So I ask as you consider this tonight, that you vote in the affirmative, and thank you for hearing me for a couple of years. And no, I am not a registered lobbyist, I am just an employee at Overlook Medical Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to comment? Okay, I'd like to, seeing as there's no more members of the public who wish to comment, I'd like to close the public hearing for this ordinance and move on to the board discussion. The, I do want to start by saying, this is something that was sent to the planning board, although I don't think we got a, we didn't get a formal report from the planning board on any of this, did we?
We did not receive.
Okay, I guess we didn't send one on the planning board.
I did request that earlier today. What was sent from our clerk was just in essence Village Council noting that the planning board said it was consistent.
Right. So it went to the planning board for a period of review to see whether the changes were consistent with their master plan. They did agree that they were. And, and so, I don't know, we'll probably answer some of the gentleman's questions about what are some of the biggest changes. I don't know, Trustee Rosner, if there's anything that you want to just jump in right away and address some of that, you know, from the planning and zoning perspective, or anybody else. And then I'd just like to open it up for questions or comments from the board.
I just want to make sure that we're talking about other professional services being available as well. There's an awful lot to talk about doctors, hopefully, accountants and others can get in there as well.
I think that the major change that was, I wish Susan Gruel was still here to go over it all again, because we've done it numerous times, but the major change was allowed on the, outside the main business streets. In other words, South Orange Avenue, Sloan Street, and Village Plaza were exempt from the rest, but on Vos, Partza Valley, Church Street, I guess, that professional offices would be allowed to be open on the first floor with the same restrictions we already have in our ordinances for certain types of businesses. And, but one of the ones, the one that's most in question was that doctors' offices would be allowed in those spaces. There are certain parking restrictions that continue, and I just don't remember them off the top of my head. That was the major change. There were some other changes to the, in this ordinance that clean up, so to speak, and modernize definitions and terms and so forth. But all those changes would be viewed as minor compared to the one, to the one change about the professional offices. And part of the reason was stated before was that there's, there's been some trouble renting out stores on these, on some of the side streets, and nothing mentioned then and on the main street, such as South Orange Avenue, it was more to help attract more businesses to allow them to, to fill in empty spaces and draw more people to the downtown. And at the same time, the more traditional retail and food establishments would remain on South Orange Avenue.
Could the planning board members just kind of review which aspects of the master plan you looked at, and how you determined that it was consistent, and whether or not you compared it with some of the goals and objectives from the plan?
Well, all the planning board members were sent, both the old version and the new versions. The discussion was mostly, almost entirely around this one issue in the actual planning board.
They would have had to state reasons why it was inconsistent, and that was the argument that couldn't be made. They all agreed that it was consistent with the, with the master plan.
The thing, the thing, and we can open this up for discussion if you, you'd like, is that the comparison was, the master plan is very, very old. Can't wait to update that. I think we realize that, so looking at a document from 1979, with or without discussing this particular district or area, I think a lot of things have changed from that. So then, the next stop would probably be the reexamine report from 2011, I think, is when it was done. But the most recent one that I think that we invested the most, well, the board at the time invested the most amount of money into was the Vision Plan. And I had not heard really, members of the planning board indicate whether they felt it was consistent. It's not a part of the statutory review, but looking at our most recent and timely document probably would be the most appropriate. And I really didn't hear a discussion regarding that.
I know for sure that at least several members of the planning board had read Division Plan and had seen it. And, you know, whether it was commented on, you know, specifically, no, they didn't do it, because that's not really what was asked. It was asked about the master plan, but...
Yeah, I mean, that was sort of beyond the purview, I think, of what the planning board's responsibility was in this particular case. And had they started discussing that, I would actually expect the attorney to tell them to stop and focus on the statutory review that they're required to do. That discussion isn't inappropriate for this group, if they have, and I think we've had it before.
Well, the master plan also, a component of that is consistency to related plans, where you're looking at, you know, things all the way up to the state development, redevelopment plan, all the way down to other planning documents. So I would, I would still maintain that the Vision Plan is the most timely. It was the one that we invested the most money into, community input, et cetera, and the vision for that corridor is different from what this amendment is going to provide.
That's your opinion.
Trustee Levinson, you look confused. It was a retail...
What core are you talking about?
The B1 zones, the ones that were identified within the Vision Plan itself. What this does is it creates an overlay on top of where the existing B1 zones are that now allow different permitted uses from the second floor now down to the first floor. So it is very different from that.
I don't think it was very, or inconsistent with the Vision Plan. I know we had dialogue during the process of reviewing the Vision Plan.
How so? For specifically, if we want to talk about Vos, I think it was pretty comprehensive in the Vision Plan what was intended for that street.
I think, well, now you're taking off a particular street, but there was dialogue even what was on Vos at the time, being attorney office, professional offices. It was a doctor, there was attorneys. It's not being inconsistent with it.
Well, inconsistent in a planning term, not in just how we feel about the district. So I'm, I'm still going to maintain, I'm not going to go on too long about this, because I think you guys are ready to vote on it. But the other thing that I would like to state is that early on in this process, it was suggested that the retail district of the core of the Central Business District essentially stopped before it got on that side street. And I think knowing now some of the interest and perhaps enthusiasm of some of the opportunities that might be coming down at some point, may be changing the character of blocks in that direction. So the idea of there's not going to be any more retail, there might very well be retail in the future, and I hope you consider that when you vote tonight.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Trustee Rosner, seconded by Trustee Levinson.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Column.
No.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Schnall.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2014-04, we are not going to read this tonight. Mr. Lewis, did you want to explain?
Oh, yeah, ordinance 2014-04. This is the, the public hearing and second reading on the refunding bond ordinance for the ECIA debt. As you recall, this was pending approval at the Local Finance Board. That hearing had been scheduled for May 14th, so the expectation we would have that hearing. We got bumped on the LFB agenda to their June meeting. So because this was noticed for this hearing, we left it on the agenda, and the recommendation is to move, to carry this and reschedule the public hearing for the June 24th meeting.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to table? If we insist, yeah, and reschedule the public hearing for June 24th.
Mr. Lewis, I believe it's June 23rd.
June 23rd, yeah. So a motion by Trustee Davis Ford.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Column. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, objections? Okay. I have the second reading, public hearing for 2014-04 on June 23rd.
Okay, resolu, ordinance 2014-06, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend subsection 138-43C of the Code of the Township of South Orange Village to allow owners of restaurants that operate sidewalk cafes to leave tables and chairs on sidewalks when not open.
Thank you. At this time, because this is the second reading, I'd like to open up the meeting to public hearing. If there's any members of the public who wish to speak about this ordinance in particular, please come forward. Okay, seeing as there's no members of the public to, who wish to speak about this ordinance, I'd like to close the public hearing. And I think we've discussed this a lot, but if there's not any other further questions, comments? We have a motion from Trustee...
I did notice Tito's, Burrito's, and Falafel Yours both have...
I've seen a couple of new places also.
...I had not seen before, so it is nice to see that, that, I didn't go up on Irvington Avenue, though, but I did see this, so...
There was one or two more on Irvington Avenue also.
I'll second Trustee Column's motion to move.
So Trustee Column, seconded, moved, Trustee Rosner, seconded. Can we have the roll call, please?
Trustee Column.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Schnall.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Thank you. 2014-07, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to temporarily suspend subsection 138-43A2 of the Code of the Township of South Orange Village through June 1, 2014, waiving fees that owners of restaurants that operate sidewalk cafes are required to pay.
Thank you. Excuse me, at this time I'd like to open this ordinance up to public hearing. If there's anybody who wishes to comment on this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to comment on this ordinance, I'd like to close the public hearing. And unless there's any questions or comments from the board, I'd ask for a motion.
I have a quick question first. In the building department right now, do we have a form that just says the fee is waived that we can hand out to some of our volunteers who are going business-to-business, saying, you know, apply for this, because we're getting to the deadline?
I don't know that we have one, but we can certainly create one.
Can we do that? Because we have one last push before this expires on June 1st, so that would be wonderful.
Okay. There's a motion by Trustee Davis Ford.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Column. Can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Schnall.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Column.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we can move on to the introduction of 2014 municipal budget.
2014-141, resolution authorizing the introduction of 2014 municipal budget and water utility budget.
Thank you. Just one quick house item. Am I correct that this requires a two-thirds vote, the budget resolution introduction? Right? Just put that out there.
Not including you.
Right.
Not including you.
I don't have a vote at all. So before I turn this over to Mr. Lewis, who has prepared what I think is another really excellent, not only budget, but also budget explanation, I wanted to make a couple quick points about this budget. I think it's pretty clear from anybody that has gone to any of the budget workshops or watches any of the meetings, that it's a pretty big priority of everybody that's sitting up here, the board members especially, but also the members of the administration, to be as responsible as possible with our finances and to always try and find new ways for us to decrease the cost of living for people here in South Orange. There is an enormous amount of effort that is put in by my colleagues on the board on a regular basis to this end, and although the budget represents kind of in a way just a, almost a culmination of our efforts on a yearly basis, and the significant efforts of our administration, and of all the department heads, and of all the staff who try to then deliver these things in the most efficient way as possible, and I think continue to impress all of us for how much they can do with what are increasingly tight resources, I think it's important to just take one second to reflect on a few priorities that I think we all share, that is, I believe, reflected in this budget, hopefully. The first is, as far as being responsible with finances go, is to really seriously leave no stone unturned, especially as far as finding areas in the way our village operates to save costs. And things like, Trustee Levinson and Mr. Lewis, who found a way to, you know, in restructuring our debt, that will save us money, those are really good examples of things that you come to when you're being incredibly diligent with your finances and your operations, and you really look at every single possible thing. It's not just going through the budget and figuring out what can you do, it's not just looking at the biggest costs and figuring out where can you cut, but it's actually looking at everything that exists, and trying to find areas where money can be saved, and a few have been found, and we owe a lot for that diligence. The second is that the cost savings that are, that have been found, that they've been found in a way that does not reduce the delivery of services to residents. And I think that what's even actually more impressive is not only does it not reduce the service delivery, I think that every year it's amazing to watch as we continue to stabilize the budget, and as we continue to actually deliver more services and higher quality services, and have pool hours open longer, all these different things that are actually expanding, even though if you look at the rate of expansion of the services and the rate, the tax rate increase from year to year, when you measure those two, the, the tax rate increase is actually even more, perhaps smaller than it already is, compared to how much is, how much that, that budget is actually buying for the people that live in this community. And the last, which is, I think, important to make, and sometimes we even forget about here, because so many of us here and our residents on the CBAC and our administration are so reasonable in this mindset, but that this is a very responsible budget, and it's not a very political budget. If you go town to town, across the state or across the country, you'll find tons of budgets introduced on election years that have 0% increases. Not that this is an election year this year for any of us, but there are a lot of gimmicks and games like that that a lot of people in local government play, and state government, and federal government, and county government, all over the place. And that doesn't happen. That isn't in this budget. You know, there is, there are no, there's no politics in this budget. I think that there are people, you know, you'll find towns that introduce a 0% increase, and some of them can do it, and are fortunate enough to be in the position to be able to do that. Some are not, and they do it because they want to make a statement, they want to show people that they're working hard, and oftentimes that is going to lead to higher costs and higher increases down the line, and once that person is out of office, it doesn't have to worry about it anymore. And we have chosen, since I've been here, not to do that. And I think that this introduced budget reflects that value, which is being responsible and being mature with our finances, saying, well, you know, we could cut it down to make a statement, but if that statement doesn't actually have any weight to it, and it's actually going to make decisions harder for people who are sitting in our seats in the future, it's really not a statement worth making. making. And I think the statement that we've made and the statement that I hear a lot of residents who ask about the taxes, obviously, I mean, that's like the number one question, you know, any of us will get on any, you know, sort of regular basis, is what are we doing about the taxes? Is being responsible is the answer, and then there's a longer explanation. But then I think people that I've talked to in town, the feedback that I've gotten, people really appreciate that. They appreciate not trying to, you know, pull something over them and say, oh, everything's great with zero percent, don't worry about anything, but that we're saying, well, we're in a pretty good place, we're going to be in a better place, and some of the difficult decisions that we have to face, Village Hall probably being the best example of something that was ultimately kicked out, the can that was kicked down the road, and the cost went up every time the can was kicked a little bit. And so again, I want to, I guess, express my appreciation to the board members and to Mr. Lewis and the rest of the administration, and kind of everybody that is part of this, because I think that there is something very significant and very positive about introducing a budget that has met all these values, and these are ones that we can share, even if we have disagreements among different lines here and there and things like that, or disagreements on ordinances, that when it comes to the taxes and when it comes to the budget, you know, the biggest piece, kind of the biggest chunk of, you know, what we need to make sure is responsible, that we are being very, very responsible about that, and not only making sure that we are trying to decrease the increase as much as possible and reduce the impact of the cost of living for residents in town, but that we're also keeping one eye set on kind of long-term solvency and sustainability from a financial perspective, and not everybody's doing that, so I think it's to be commended as we go into actually introducing the budget, that we are taking those values and I think doing such a good job of that. And so a person is obviously extremely responsible for that responsibility. I want to turn things over to Mr. Lewis, Village Administrator, he's going to walk us through in a little bit more detail some aspects of this here.
I'd just like to make one other comment before we start going into the detailed process. This budget represents only twenty, twenty-some-odd percent of our total tax bill, and it has to be recognized that it is a small portion of our total tax bill, that in fact, the school budget represents 56% of that bill.
And I think that's really important, because to piggyback on what the, our president stated and what you've stated, we, we have done an incredible job in being so proactive, and I won't restate the things that you've stated, Mr. President, but the residents still feel the burden of a high tax rate, and it's still only, I think it's important for us to make it clear that we only get 28, 27 cents out of every dollar that is collected from our residents, and I think that as often as we can, we need to make that clear so that people know what we're responsible for and how we put it together. And it's a whole nother discussion, another issue, if we could ever do something to that, to minimize that 56 cents out of every dollar that we send to the Board of Ed.
The other part of it is, is that the discretionary portion of our budget is extremely small. What is it, about 20% of the budget?
If that.
If that.
And so one of the things that we'll also do when the budget is adopted is we'll put all this into the budget tool that's on our website, and they have a couple new features that actually make it a little easier to understand. One of the things that makes it really clear is how much of the budget is actually within our discretion on an annual basis, and that's important, too. But, Mr. Lewis, if you want to take it away.
Yeah, thank you. The, we're here in the budget that's proposed in February. We had a budget workshop, and at the time, I was very excited to at least put out a preliminary budget, looked like we're going to be able to keep the tax rate increase actually just below 1%, .97. But at the time, I included that little caveat, however, it's pending finding out what's in the AFS and what the final numbers are. Quite frankly, the AFS and the operations and in our 2013 final numbers were about where I thought they were, and we would likely be right where I thought we would be, but then we got some, a little bit of a surprising news in mid to late March. We received pension bills, past retroactive pension bills from the police and fire retirement system. I will certainly, in the broader sense, I will have a much more comprehensive budget presentation and overview, more line by line, really highlighting for the public hearing, and we'll make that available on the website in advance of the public hearing. But I will also, I think, because this is a, an issue that I think is out there, people are wondering, what is it, how did it happen, why did it happen? So I will, I will put up a more detailed explanation, but in, in short, the village in its negotiations with the police union and the fire union in 2007, eight, what, 2000, I think the contracts expired at the end of 2007, so for the contract years, 2008, 9, 10, and a portion of 11, the, both unions were without contracts, and under those circumstances, the status quo prevails, and all the officers were paid at their 2007 rates throughout the duration of that period of time. You know, certainly at the time, I would assume that everyone knew that the contracts would not be settled either via arbitration or voluntarily, you know, negotiations at a zero percent. So it certainly was, and to be expected, that at some point, significant retroactive salary and wages would be due, accompanying that are retroactive FICA, you know, contributions, employer share of it, and also pension contributions. The hour, the village's bills, we get bills from the pension typically two years out, based on two years ago, based on the actuary calculations, which in turn are based on the wages paid. So all of our bills that we received for eight, nine, 10, 11, during those years, two years out, were based on the 2007 reported wages. Ultimately, the contracts were settled, I think in the case of the police via arbitration and then a voluntary settlement with the fire department. The, it would appear, because I, I was not here during any of this period, but I did not find any indication of any emergency appropriations, borrowing, special emergencies or otherwise, that the village did apparently reserve the funds to pay the anticipated retroactive wages and the anticipated retroactive FICA contributions. Regrettably, when we got these bills in, I was unable to find where there had ever been a reserve set up for these past two pension bills that again are from eight, 2008 through 11. That number was a little over $392,000, which, to put it in context, the original proposal in February, I think the entire tax levy was only going up $200,000. So the $392,000 was significant. At the same time, we did get some beneficial news in March to help soften that blow somewhat the state on our current 2014 pension bill. The actuaries went back and recalculated based on the pension reforms that have been put in over the recent years, which include increased employee contributions, some changes to the retirement dates. So that mitigated somewhat of this sting. I think our overall between PFRS, PERS, went down about 140, 150,000, so that, that helped offset the 392. But then in addition, we got some additional, ultimately it was bad news, our reserve for uncollected taxes, which, without getting overly complex, is an appropriation that we have to make to offset the fact that we are the collecting agency for all taxes. We collect and have to pay the county and the school 100% of their taxes. We don't, nor does any town in the state, collect 100% of the taxes. So when if we bill, for example, and just for round numbers, $100 million total between the school, the county, it's probably actually closer to 80, but if we only collect 99% of it, then at the end of the year, we would come up a million short, and since we have to pay them each 100%, we're the ones that would have to absorb the million-dollar shortfall. So the state has a calculation by which you do that, and you base it on the total of the levies, and you utilize last year's collection rate, and it tells you how much in addition you need to appropriate and tax for in order to ensure that we have enough money to fund our operations. This year in February, the only information I had available was last year's school tax levy, and that was utilized in the reserve for uncollected taxes calculation that I had projected in the budget. Obviously, since that time, the school has now passed their budget, which does have a fairly significant increase, with the result of which increased our reserve for uncollected taxes by $107,000. So that's on top of the 392. In, you know, at the same time, and I, and I won't go through in detail, I did provide you all with a memo, we did find some other areas where we got some positive news from the AFS. One of the areas most notably was our construction department, and particularly the revenues generated there because of all the activity, which is, I think, a positive sign and a positive result of all the, sort of the turnaround and the growth and the, all the efforts that this board and prior boards have done to pursue redevelopment. The, the bottom line, you know, some other good news, and again, all this will be more comprehensively laid out prior to the, the public hearing and then added at the public hearing budget overview, but other additional good news is the employee contributions, the increase in the employee healthcare contributions have offset the increase in the premium so that our health benefit line remains flat with no increase there. We were able, we had some additional fund balance in our capital improvement fund, so where I had originally proposed $150,000 to the capital improvement fund, which would fund $3 million in capital improvements, we were able to scale that back to 130 because we had about 25,000, 23,000 left in balance in that fund. We also had our, we had done a special emergency appropriation for Hurricane Sandy in the amount of 125,000 to be paid back at 25 a year for five years. However, DCA, because we received FEMA reimbursement, is requiring that to be paid in full, so that's provided for in this budget, but we were able to pay that out of the reserve. So the, the bottom line in the budget that you have before you, and there was one minor tweak, that, just a number on, on two different ones, but the compressed version that you were provided over the weekend, there's a very, very minor tweak. And then the final, if you will, curve ball that was thrown since February is, generally speaking, you anticipate and expect your aggregate assessed value or ratables will remain flatter, and in a perfect world, you hope they will grow, and if they grow, as last year, the overall levy increased by a slightly higher percentage than the tax rate increase, because it was able to be spread around amongst some additional properties. Unfortunately, last year notwithstanding, and the village was very proactive and preceded me in undertaking a reassessment to adjust when the market went down, we still were, had a number of tax appeals that were settled last year through voluntary settlements, tax board determinations, or tax court judgments, so that I was not pleased in February, I was operating on last year's number, because we didn't have the closed and certified table of aggregate assessed value. We got that in, our aggregate assessed values were actually down from last year by six and a half million dollars. And the unfortunate fact of that is that the same levy now has to be spread over fewer, so we're in a situation where the budget as proposed, the tax levy is only going up 1.05% or $227,000, but the tax rate would go up 1.34%. It's still, you know, I think fairly modest, again, the, you know, when I initially just plugged in the 392, the 1% went over 3%. So it, you know, took some effort, we did catch some breaks in a number of other areas. We are, and as I addressed, and I'll address it further, you know, we increased a little bit of some of the other funds that we had available, sort of your rainy day fund, your surplus, some of your utility surpluses, but not to a level that concerns me. I think you're all aware that when I came on board, we inherited a, in 12, a budget that had a glaring hole in a million and a half dollar revenue that wasn't there, and I knew we were going to have a three or four-year period to navigate. I think we're still on course. Obviously, this pension bill was a little bit of a setback, but we, we have so many positive things on the horizon in terms of some of the new pilots that'll be coming on board with the Gateway Project, with the Third and Valley Project, with hopefully some other redevelopment we see. I think we're going to see overall an increase and a turnaround in our assessed values. Certainly to echo what the village president says, I have to give credit really from, from the top with this board and the president, all the way down through to every worker. Everybody here, I think, has bought into sort of a new direction, new morale. I think it's reflected in the way this board treats the employees, expressing the appreciation in some of the events that we've had, really pressing, you know, to think before you purchase, to be smart, to use competitive purchasing, to try and do things more efficiently, to certainly trustee Levinson has been a champion in, in his efforts in reducing our phone bills and reducing a number of our other utility bills, and it has been a systemic effort by everyone contributing to, to manage our costs, control our costs, which allow us to do this and still absorb, you know, these, these sort of unfortunate developments. So, you know, the good news is next year, we won't have that 392,000 that we have to fund, so that will certainly help make next year much easier. The net effect on, on the average assessed home, which is $460,274 value of this budget as proposed, would be $59.64. As the village president referenced, this covers all, most all of our unions are all locked in now, so this covers all the, the union contractual adjustments, the pay raises, it keeps, maintains staffing levels, maintains service levels, continues to provide, I think, all the amenities and all the services that are what, you know, I think make South Orange such a special place and what the residents, I think, come to expect. Obviously, we wish we could have a bigger influence on the overall tax bill, but no matter what we do, as trustee Levinson indicated, there's, you know, three-quarters of it is out of our control, but we're certainly doing our part. Again, I think it's a responsible budget. We, you know, I think we're positioned to ideally do even better next year, and then we start to see some of these positive developments kick in. One thing really that was sort of, the one sort of open issue, I think, subsequent to the workshop, involved SOPAC and the village's assistance to SOPAC and subsidies to SOPAC. Most of you will recall, last year, we were approached by SOPAC, they had a new director, they, they felt they were going to turn things around, they requested in this board, did provide some additional assistance over and above what had been the historic subsidy level. I think the hope and expectation at the time was that that would be enough to get them turned around. Since that time, we have been approached by myself and trustee Schnall, by the executive director of SOPAC, the president of the board, and I think the treasurer, Mr. Zubek, who have shared, and then subsequently, Mr. Lightner provided a memo to the board, I think outlining some of the positive changes and direction that has occurred there, but they are still expressing a need for some additional support. Ultimately, that's, that's for this board to decide. Last year, the quote, increase in the subsidy was $70,000. The way I set this budget up and the reason I did it was, was based on some conversations and some thinking, but also with an eye towards, if we introduce at a certain level, we can always reduce without having to reintroduce. We can't increase, we would have to reintroduce. So as proposed, this, this includes 50,000 versus the 70. I did provide you in the memo, the impacts of reducing that, either increasing if it was refunded at the full $70,000, or if it was, I think I had 35,000 or nothing, going, reverting back to the historic level of 239,500. That is a question, you know, ultimately, we could, I could make the amendment if ultimately, whatever you decide. That was sort of the one open end, loose end, I think, that outcome from the, the workshops that I think, you know, warrant some discussion or some direction.
And what is the overall percent increase?
Well, yeah, again, as noted, as proposed, the levy itself only goes up 1.05%, but because of the six and a half million dollar loss in ratables, the tax rate itself goes up 1.34%. I would note, at least based on my research, that's the lowest, that's lower than last year, which was 1.43, lower than the year before, which was, I want to say about 1.6, and would be the lowest at least since 1999, which is as far back as I went to look. So I still think, and again, a good, solid, responsible budget, which maintains, you know, and I think the appropriate balance of continuing to provide the services that the residents expect at what I think is a relatively manageable percentage, and again, on the average assessed home, it'd be $59 increase.
I'd just like to weigh in and to just say that I want to thank you for a very excellent budget, with of course, the input and the feedback of the Board of Trustees.
Was that a motion? I second that.
Regarding the almost $400,000 pension mistake, whatever we're going to call it, was there any comment from the former CFO, village administrator, about that money and why?
Just that there wasn't a reserve for it. The only answer I got.
I know we budgeted for the salary increases at a greater amount than the arbitration came in, so it's just, it's hard, it's hard for us, or at least for the ones who are here these earlier years, would fathom why that money, so I guess he just used that in the general budget to help keep down the taxes one year.
Yeah, ultimately, if it wasn't set aside in a dedicated reserve account, which would carry through from year to year, and it would be sitting there as a reserve for pension bill. Ultimately, if in the given year that the contracts were settled, you paid all the retro, if there was leftover revenues, those would go into appropriation reserves, although likely, very likely, I'd have to go back and check the history, there was a pension tier for canceling appropriation- canceling appropriations, which if you cancel an appropriation before year ended, immediately it's fund balance. If you otherwise wait, it goes into appropriation reserve for a year to see if any other bills come in, and then it goes into fund balance. So the likelihood, it was not put into a reserve, so if it was there, it went into surplus and then...
And it seemed to us, remember, not that we necessarily would want to use it, I thought there was some kind of, you could phase in over five years, a pension.
We did, and we approached, when I first got it, and before I kind of went back to the drawing board and sharpened my pencil, my immediate reaction was, can we do this as special emergency, go to local finance board, get permission to pay this over three or five years? And the feedback we got, I think legally, it was doable, but the irony with the local finance board now is that anytime you go down there for any special consideration, and it kind of bothers me philosophically, because it almost punishes people that are being responsible and having low budgets, is, well, are you at the levy cap? No, and if you're not, they're saying, then go to the levy cap. And then, you know, so it would, it would force us to artificially increase the rest of the budget to get the 2% in order to spread it over five years, and I just couldn't do that.
And, you know, by the way, I do think, you know, it really did a great job with the budget. I know we run it very tight, and, you know, we do have to hope, and we got lucky with the construction fees, which I guess we'll be getting a lot of construction fees this year with the finishing of the Gateway Project, Third and Valley, Seton Hall's major...
Should be another good year.
Probably the biggest of all three, actually, probably in terms of construction fees this year. So, you know, I assume that's, you know, calculated into your budget of what you, we expect to get on it. But basically, a good job, and I was glad to hear that we're still under 1.5% despite the bad news. And I guess the real increase that most people think about is the 1.34, not the 1.05.
Right.
So, you know, when we're touting this, we should be talking 1.34 in reality for residents.
But the other part of the conversation that we had today about anticipating revenues, which we can't do, even though we understand that those revenues will be coming in this year, because that's the way the budgeting system works.
Most notably, the Gateway.
Yes. Well, as well as when those things come in, such as the sewer fees, we're adding significant number of units, those fees will come in. So there's all additional revenues that will come in, but we can't anticipate it.
To his point, the outlook is good, because now that we have the additional revenues coming in from the two projects, the additional fees from the sewer units, it does help build a cushion, you know, for the future, just like we made structural changes several years ago, including things like the outsourcing of landscaping, which we were told would be a one-time win for us, and we could expect to see return to the higher numbers. And we've actually kept that, I think the total contract is still well under 50,000, which is what we originally projected. I don't think we've come any close to that, so, and other changes that we've made in other departments over the long term, these, those changes have had a big effect. And then we said they would have two or three years before some of them would really kick in to the contracts, and clearly, they've all been kicking in, which has helped made life easier in the long run, especially going forward.
I, for the benefit of the board, I copied trustee Schnall and Mr. Lewis on this. I wrote a message to the chair of the SOPAC board to provide a few more details with respect to their budget. Everyone probably received the memo that Mr. Lightner had sent around. I think that, I'll say now, I was a little surprised to see that request come back in because they had indicated to the board of trustees that they were on a three to five year trajectory to begin substantially eliminating the subsidy all the way down to what they anticipated would at some point be nothing, which I don't really know if that's realistic or practical, but I think the goal was to continue reducing the subsidy. And from the positive things that we've heard from Mr. Packer, and he's really been doing a tremendous job, you've seen a lot of revenue come in from the ticket sales, from the number of ticket sales, from the caliber of the performances, from the grants that they've gone after and received, that it's just not clear to me, from the money that we had given them, and how they're investing it, and how they're kind of getting money back, where that trade-off is. So he said he would be supplying that, and of course, I will forward it out to the other board members, but before we make a quote unquote "policy" decision on that. I'm comfortable moving this forward as is, as Mr. Lewis indicated, it's a little easier, take it out later, and then we can discuss at the next meeting what you want to do in terms of that additional request.
My initial reaction was the same from that the SOPAC letter, but I did tend to think that the, that their biggest loss had been direct contributions from some of the larger contributors, mainly board members. That total number seemed to have gone down. I know they actually lost, you know, one of the really large contributors a couple of years ago. So that's what I took it to mean. I think everything else in the picture were good, and they need to somehow redouble those efforts. That's how I took it to read it, or maybe it's just going to be a more stable number going forward on what they, what they get in contributions.
Trustee Schnall, can you give some more clarity to...
Sure. I mean, I would also liken it as, they have grown tremendously, so part of what they asked for, and we provided them, to them was...
You need to speak into the mic.
Was with that subsidy, it actually is an investment in their program. So they're using those monies to do several things. The first was to get their balance sheet to a positive state. So one of the things that the chair of the board, Tony Lightner, said to us last year, which I think was proven to be true, was most foundations don't like to give grants for debt service. So, you know, by giving them an opportunity, by actually selling us the building in terms of getting, and getting rid of the debt, they had a positive balance sheet, and within a very short period of time, they were able to get a very significant grant. And that began the process and built some momentum, and they continue to get more grants. So I see it as an opportunity, they are expanding also their arts education program, which is a big part of Mr. Packer's overall idea and concept, that it's not just a venue specific. We're sitting in SOPAC today, right here, which is a performance space, but his concept, and I applauded and agree with it, is that the brand of SOPAC, what it stands for, is not just venue specific, that it goes beyond that. And in order to accomplish something like that, it takes staff, it takes investment, it takes resources, and I think they're in the process of trying to balance all that, to be candid. And I think one year, if anything, the problem was expectation setting. One year is just not a lot of time in terms of what our village president talked about. Not only are we, you know, do we have, and they have, I would draw an analogy in terms of a fairly reasonable budget, but they're expanding on the top line in terms of what they're offering. So I think they need to balance that. And one of the things that the governors of SOPAC are going through this fall is a planning stage, and actually, a strategic planning session where all the board directors, who they call the governors, will be getting together and discussing a three-year plan. And I think in that time, which I hope to participate in, they will really decide whether how feasible this is. Can they ever get to the point where they will not ever require a subsidy, or what will that amount be? As they consider what kind of growth is attainable and not only just possible, but realistic, given the financial constraints. And just like private corporations, if we had unlimited infinite capital, we could do great things, but that's just not the case. We have constraints, and I think they recognize that, and that's part of the strategic planning.
I've had the opportunity recently to talk to one or two people who are involved in some sort of arts center or facility similar to SOPAC. What they share with me, and I don't know if it's true, that very seldom are entities such as these are so self-efficient that they don't need some sort of subsidy. So if that is indeed true, I think our expectations can be that SOPAC gets to the point where their subsidies from this board is at a minimum. But I really don't know enough about this industry to know if that is indeed true, that these types of organizations very seldom exist without some sort of subsidy.
I think you're correct of that, especially for a, again, when you talk about a performance space of this size, it is very challenging. And I think kudos to Steve Laurie, who's actually been Mark Packer's collaborator in terms of bringing in the programming, for bringing in programming this year. Not only is it more than twice as many shows, but the attendance is up tremendously in terms of the people are coming in. You hear it when you speak to residents, they're now saying, hey, you know, I never went to a performance, and now I found myself going to one or two, or even more. And the more we're introducing, actually trustee Clark and I attended something this, was it Saturday night, Friday night, this weekend? And it was apparent, we actually were kind of surprised, but it was a good thing, we looked in the, in our fellow audience, and there was not a whole lot of people we recognized. So I think the good part for that is that they're drawing people who are not just residents, who are just from South Orange or Maplewood, but they're really from a wider range. And in a small theater like this, I think that's outstanding. What that means for our overall economy, and I think that's a big part of what SOPAC is doing, is those people went out to dinner, they may have had coffee afterwards, and they got to see our town and reflect, and that's important. There's a survey that goes out to all the attendees of these performances, asking them, you know, how they felt about it. And that's one of the big things, the feedback we get is the surprise of, wow, South Orange is a great little place, I have to come back again. So there are tangibles, there are dollars, and there are intangibles or indirect benefits that I think SOPAC is a big part of. And that's not even getting into the philosophical aspects of what an arts community is, and what this building and brand stands for to help that, so.
Mister President, could we invite SOPAC to our next meeting to answer any questions about their budget?
Yeah. In fact, we, I mean, we can make sure to do that before our 23rd.
Yeah, that would be great in advance.
Do you want to ask them to come for June 9th? So you can kind of evaluate that.
I mean, they don't necessarily need to be at the 23rd, right?
Well, that's what I'm saying, if they came on June 9th, then you'd have the information in advance.
Then we have the information, then if we need to do anything before the 23rd, we have the time.
That would be great.
So we'll reach out for June 9th.
Mister President, actually, it got me warmed up, so now I want to talk a little more here. First of all, I want to, again, reiterate, I thought, I think the budget is an excellent one, I want to expand upon some of the comments you made. And mention actually to our residents, I think one of the things that is allowing us to keep our costs down to some degree is actually volunteerism. Not only for events that are run here, but we think about the flower bombing, thinking about the Irvington Avenue corridor, the cleanup that was this weekend, a tremendous amount of residents are coming out and are offering their time and services that otherwise might have to be done by paid staff. And I think the fact that we're keeping the administration and our staff, first of all, happy morale is up, and it builds momentum. And I think we're seeing the direction where people want to come out, they want to do more, and then the village employees are happy, and they want to participate more. You're actually seeing a number of the employees, including Joe from the DPW, who was at Saturday, on his own time. You know, this, he was, you know, he came out and he spent time. So I think this is just the direction we're going of great positiveness, and I think it's terrific.
It would be interesting if maybe we tried, probably wouldn't take that much, maybe we could have a volunteer do it, but is to keep track of the number of hours that volunteers are spending doing these things.
Yeah.
You know, because if you have a 50-person event for two hours, I mean, you got 100, you know, person hours, I mean, that's actually significant.
It is.
Right, that's one event.
Yep.
So maybe there's just a better way, I mean, the same way that we're trying to keep some kind of metrics on, well, how much time do we spend on Oprah requests, or how much do we, time do we spend on, you know, filing service requests that come in through public stuff, you know, maybe an interesting thing to think about would be to try and quantify the amount of contributions that volunteers are making, because that'd be interesting to measure over years, too.
And we have all these standing committees that are volunteer-based. That's huge.
Additionally, there are some projects where we literally don't have the staff, and a huge number of volunteers is what gets it done. The flower bombing, for example, if we hadn't had 40 people do that, wouldn't have been done in three hours. Same thing with River Day, I mean, talking about a couple hundred people, and we don't have that many people.
It would be great to know, like, how much, how much volunteer time, I mean, something, River Day is a great example of like, that could, that could very well be something that we as a board say, okay, well, we want Public Works to completely clean the river, you know, end to end, you know, pull everything, I mean, how much would that cost to do that?
Yep.
And how much should we save by not doing that? And, and obviously, there's, I mean, not to say that it's only a financial balance, right, there's obviously a ton of benefit to getting people involved like that.
Exactly.
But just from a financial perspective, it would be interesting to try and figure that out.
There's actually a formula, working in a nonprofit world, there's actually a formula for how you calculate the person, based on what they do, what they make, you know, if you break it down to the hour, what they normally make, and I believe it's like three-fourths of that amount is how you calculate their volunteer hours to whatever they're doing. So there is, I would imagine it would be millions of dollars in this town.
So the, part of the public information marketing committee has a civic engagement aspect, volunteer, it's not only communications, but participation and engagement, and we're actually working towards that, so I'll add that, if you don't mind, to...
Yeah, no, that would be great, because a big part of that, and this is starting to get sidetracked a little bit, maybe we can follow up a little bit more after the meeting, but...
Can I move?
Is, yeah, you move. You're on the tax issue.
I'm not touching that.
Is, you know, I think, you know, a way to get more volunteers involved is to tell, is to show, right, how many people are getting involved.
Right.
And so I sit here and I say, oh, we got the thing on the website, come to the website to volunteer. Who watching that really is going to be that, I mean, you know, we say, well, we got this many hours, this many volunteers, they saved us this much money, they did this many things. I mean, that's the kind of thing that someone would be like, that many people are volunteering? Like, maybe I'll go volunteer. And so if we can show the community really does exist, which we all know it exists because we see it, but if we can market that, I mean, we probably see an increase. So anyway, you had a question about a moving?
Yes, I'd like to move for the budget.
Where'd you like to move it to?
You know what, this is a G-rated, this is a G-rated program.
See how long we can go.
And I can't, I have to edit my response and say, I want to move the budget.
Second.
All right, so there's a motion by trustee Davis Ford to introduce 2014-141, and a second by trustee Cullen. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, so we're going to get some information up on the website pretty shortly about this. And what I will see, we can also do is take out the discussion tonight from our board meeting about the budget, and at least quickly in the next couple of days, place that there, too. When we do the final adoption, well, Mr. Lewis will also prepare us a little bit of a more explanation for members of the public, you know, some graphs and pie charts, breakdowns of where things are going, and something a little bit more like that, but we'll try and get some more of that up there.
Absolutely, and I was maybe asleep at the wheel. Did the motion include setting the public hearing for June 23rd?
It did not.
It did not, but now it does.
Would you like to make that motion separately?
And please, excuse me, you got caught me. I'm also a move that the introduction of the budget 2014-141 be scheduled for a, for, was it first?
Public hearing and final adoption.
Thank you. Public hearing on June 9th.
June 23rd.
June 23rd.
Yeah, it's got to be at least 28.
So a motion by trustee Davis Ford, second by trustee Levinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, subsensions? Okay, great. So we'll get that up on the website, and people can also find copies of the budget if they do want a physical copy. We're not going to print out a million of them, but you can get them in our temporary offices at 76 Alphard Jav, and also the library. So at this time, I would like to open the meeting up for a second public comment period. If there's anybody who wishes to speak, please just come forward.
Just real quick on this, can they also receive it by email if they request this budget?
Yes.
Okay.
That would in fact be preferred.
Well, we'll have it, yeah. We'll have it on the, they can just download it on the website.
Right, it'll be on the website.
If they don't have to email, they can just go download it.
So anybody who wishes to speak, just come forward.
Up the mic, please.
It's not a class yet.
She recognized, just go to the mic.
I've always wanted to be a teacher, but...
Good evening, Mayor Torpey, trustees, Mr. Ball.
Just make sure to state your name and address, please.
My name's Alyssa Aronson, I'm a longtime resident of this township. Imagine you live on Irvington Avenue, how would you feel to live there for 40-plus years? If they did condemnation or inhumane, go home and think about it.
Okay, thank you. Yep, you can just, yeah.
Condemnation, I guess. What's Mr. Ball? That's what I was asking.
The board passed two ordinances tonight regarding outdoor seating for restaurants, and I commend the board for that. My perspective is, as a co-owner of the first restaurant in South Orange that had outdoor seating, Adler &amp; Company on Village Plaza, and we only had room for two tiny cafe tables and two little... and two little French-type chairs that you see in Bryant Park or in the parks in France. And we did that for a while until the town realized that we were doing it and told us we couldn't do it. So they threatened to give us a ticket unless we took the chairs and tables in, which we did. Thereafter, the town passed an outdoor seating ordinance, terrific, except that we didn't have enough room on the sidewalk under the ordinance to have our tables out. But it was a start, and I'm glad we are today where we are. Going along with that, I hope that the Village Center Alliance and the board will make sure that the restaurant owners keep the sidewalks clean. There's not much worse than a really dirty sidewalk outside a restaurant. And also, my pet peeve, some of the umbrellas, especially on Sloan Street, are just too low. And if you'd ever sit there and watch, especially men, go by as they come out of the train station, exactly, they're ducking, and it's funny to watch, but it's not funny. So those ought to be raised. And finally, before President Torpey, I had complained to the board about the sorry state of the flowers on the poles in South Orange, South Orange Avenue. I'd come back from France recently and they have things called villes fleuries, villages of flowers, and they give awards, and I saw how terrible our flowers looked, and they just look poor and sad, and last year the flowers were beautiful, and I was proud to be in South Orange, as I often am, but the flowers were terrific, and I hope we get the same thing this year, so thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a, well, two are the only here, but is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, so we're going to close public comments. Do we have any height requirements, restrictions for that? Because that, it's funny, I mean, I've definitely been the, you know, and that's one of the reasons why I'm very personally morally opposed to the use of umbrellas, because I think that on a general basis, people hold them way too low when they're walking in. If you're tall, you've got to like dodge in and out, you're getting your eyes knocked out.
That happens to me all the time.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Umbrella pokophobia.
Right, so it would be interesting, I don't, if there's any standards that are set, or if some of them are adjustable or not, I don't know if we could put that into any of this, to ask them to get it above a certain amount.
I think initially just...
Certainly we could encourage them, and you can always just raise the base or put it on top of something. I don't think we have anything on the code at the moment.
Why don't we just ask?
So maybe if people notice it, if they just mention it to us and we can just pass it along to the business owner, I imagine they'd want to help. You know, they wouldn't say, oh, well, it doesn't matter, you know, they don't want people walking by their business and being frustrated.
Yeah, that's, you know, that was one issue, and I know one of them having very low umbrellas, just don't have umbrellas or whatever, but the, and the other issue is also that a couple of the stores, I won't mention their name, a couple of the restaurants, still have their tables that have two rows, but they're closer than five feet. They're actually closer to three feet apart instead of five or six feet apart, because when you have the chairs out, you've got to have those tables at least six or seven feet apart, if there's going to be chairs, to keep that five feet made. So that's what I think we have to have code enforcement, just remind them that they have to leave a path for pedestrians.
Friendly reminders.
Yeah.
And the umbrella issue, I think there's only two places that have umbrellas that I can think of, and I think we could just go to this, and they'll probably should come from the Village Alliance, but we should probably just ask them if they can see if they can get bigger umbrellas, higher, taller.
And then finally, the follow-up. Since we've got such good feedback and reviews about the beautiful flowers last year, can we just make sure that we can match or exceed last year's?
They've been doing quite a bit of planting already, and the flowering baskets, last year was the first year that we started where they actually grew them in the greenhouse, and so they came out fully mature, as opposed to in prior years, you'd wait two months before you could even see the flowers. So they should be out soon, perhaps even this week, and we've also added additionally flowering baskets on Irvington Avenue as well, so.
Okay, thank you. May also be opportunities for volunteer efforts along that line. I was actually earlier this evening at an event and spoke with a woman who does something in Montclair called Gorilla Gardeners, which is specifically about edible items and kind of, but who knows, that could be done with...
From the river.
More aesthetically pleasing, thank you. No, let's not take the ones from the river.
Okay, let's move to the approval of bills.
Yes, I move the bills list audited by the treasurer and a copy provided to the board for examination.
You skip grant.
The board discussion.
We'll do that, we should move the bills first. Motion?
Yeah, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Schnall. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, grant application priorities.
Yeah, I'm not sure at this point whether or not this is a moot point based upon the earlier conversation, but what I had hoped to do, Adam and I were going back and forth, we had all sorts of grant ideas, and what I had hoped to do tonight was basically just suss them out and pick them and be sure what we were going to pursue. Do you have an update to that effect, Mr. Levinson?
I'm looking for my email, because my connection is just now re, coming back on again. Mr. Lerner had prepared, and I think there were a number of potentially available DOT grants, Safe Roots to School Program, the Transit Alternative, which is a different grant pool, you could apply for both. And I think what we're looking for, some direction from the board, and it probably better, because he started going through it today, and I don't know that he got it to the point, is perhaps we put together a list of all the ones with our recommendations, our thoughts, and then by the next meeting, I think most all of them that I'm aware of, we still have some time to get a sense, some, there are some where, within one particular grant program, for example, the village engineer may have identified one or two or three potential projects, and what we're looking for, I think, is some direction in terms of which the board would favor. There is also, we're evaluating grants, and the question is, you know, do you pursue grants because there's grants and then do a project, or do you identify a project you want to do and then go look for grants to fund a project that you actually intended to do? So that's sort of part of the balance that we're striking as well. I know a lot of this was discussed at Public Works with the engineer as well.
Yeah, a little bit, but to be honest, the Public Works discussion, I think, was a little bit under-informed, we were a little behind, working with old information as far as what Adam's plans were and my own understandings of some of the grant options there. So I don't know how useful that was. But again, given the June 30th deadline for these, I just, I was concerned about making sure we advanced this and making sure these folks knew what's going on.
Yeah, the, well, I guess the one, the June 30th, which is the Transit Alternative Grant that former trustee Bowers spoke about, certainly I think the River Greenway Committee supports applying and making an application to continue with that project. Was there a competing potential project for that particular funding source?
That was part of the, either misunderstanding or...
I think there was some confusion between that particular program versus some of the other transit programs.
The Transit Village, yeah, and the Safe Roots to School, which is a completely different program. Yeah, and Adam was concerned about applying for multiples because the assumption was it would make you less attractive, because they'd want to just choose whatever the cheapest one was, if they chose that one. And kind of made it sound like in his mind, we had to pick one, and I'm not entirely comfortable with that.
No, I, and Adam's learning a lot, and I, but in my experience, and I've had considerable experience with grants, I apply for as many as I can apply for. I don't ever feel like, and I don't think particularly among these different state programs, that they're like talking shop, and they did somebody apply for you over there, I don't, they're not that organized.
I think he meant the same grant pool, right?
The same grant pool.
Within a particular grant pool, if you put in multiple projects, yeah.
Yeah, that's probably not wise.
But I don't think, and he may have been, I don't think that, again, the transit ones, and I think that the Transit Village ones, and we have in the past applied and identified and picked, and we did go with one application. So certainly in that context, yeah, if, a lot of them won't even let you put in more than one application to a particular fund.
I think, you know, part of the issue has always been, and it's been, whether it's been Adam or his predecessor, or whoever we've had, the board has always had a sense, most of the board members have always had a sense, that we're probably not reaching or getting to every grant that would help the village, and I understand the point very well, just don't take a grant for the sake of taking a grant, because some grants cost you too much money, and other grants have, you know, very large matches to it. But I think because of the amount of grants that there can be between the federal, the state, and other sources, and versus the amount of available time that, in this case, the deputy administrator has, are we better off going to a firm that specializes in helping the town get grants? And I know we've pushed around it 100 times, and are we better off going to a lobbying firm or a firm that specializes in just getting grants? But I think that we really, because the potential for so much money is out there, and we saw from the former fire chief, who got an enormous grant for a fire truck and giving some of the work that former trustee Bauer did.
That was about $800,000, right?
And getting money for the former fire, trustee Bauer, enormous amount of money for the River Greenway Project, and it's like, if somebody hasn't championed these, we're missing out on them. And, you know, and my sense is that we do a good job, but we don't do a great job. And they do better than what the average town does, but there's a lot more that we probably could be getting. I could be wrong, but my guess is, based on, you know, we go to the municipalities or reading about them, and I think the board should entertain, at least not for this year's budget, but for next year's budget, once again, is entertain the idea of bringing in a firm that specializes in helping get grants or lobbying for the town to get grants.
We did one.
Yeah, but we never actually did it, though.
Well, yes, we did. We absolutely did, we got a report, yes. Except there weren't opportunities, that's when Congress was cutting back.
So, but I think that that's something that we really should be discussing, and I don't know whether it should come from the Finance Committee or whatever committee, but we should be considering this number, getting the amount that we need to spend this year for next year, and this is by no way and means a slap at the deputy administrator or the former person who did it. It's just that these people have a lot on their plate, and we really need to maximize what we can get, especially because we're a small town with a lot of expenses.
Is there an opportunity to, I know Seton Hall has grant resources and grant...
We used the same people that Seton Hall used in looking for grants, and in fact, they made the recommendation of this firm.
One of the suggestions to the Public Works Committee, if you're looking at some transportation projects, I think our jitneys would probably be ranked really high up there with the memo that everyone received regarding SOPA, salaries for the bus drivers, how we're going to continue providing that service, hopefully expanding that service, the alternative transportation in the village, particularly since it was funded by a grant previously, and that money is now dry.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to bring that up as a discussion item, because that wasn't included as part of the budget discussion, that in fact, SOPA has been asked for help and fund, well, there are two parts. One, they don't contribute the $50,000 a year to our revenue, and the other one being that they've now made a request for subsidy for the salaries of the jitney drivers. And I think that it deserves a conversation on the board about how that should be handled.
Why don't we, will you submit that on the jot form for the next meeting?
Sure.
June 9th.
Is there a committee that that can also be vetted in?
Well, I think it's been discussed over several committees now, and now it's kind of to the board policy decision, yeah.
One thing that we might want to do, too, in discussing the grants, is I'd be interested in getting a better sense of how much time Mr. Laurie spends on doing the grant writing, because if there are certain aspects of certain people's jobs, where there's like one very finite thing that isn't necessarily interrelated to everything else, that could go to a company that might have an economy of scale, be able to provide that at a, basically a greater level of efficiency than we could, that would open, if that only opens up, you know, a few hours a week, maybe it's not a big deal, but if that opens up five out of 10, 20 hours a week, and there's more, you know, like, for example, marketing and social media stuff that we want to be doing more of, and that he's been doing increasingly more of, that's something that's a little hard to, you know, for us to go out somewhere and get that, and there's a handful of other areas like that that are part of the job. You can't have someone else managing the police department, or, oh, yeah, whatever. And so, anyway, if that is one component that could be removed and allow this person to spend more time doing more other things, you know, that should be part of the discussion as well, is what would we gain? How many hours would we gain, even though it might be, there might be a cost? So maybe something that we can just make sure to include as part of that conversation is a report from him about, you know, kind of how many hours a week or a month about grant activities.
We should also remind each department head to keep an eye open for grants that, in their specific area, you know, as Chief Marky had done, because they're often in tune with grants that Adam might not be in, or really us might not be in. And, you know, I just think there's an opportunity here for a lot more money for us to come.
Okay.
Unless there's any other questions or comments, so I have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.